Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Pranduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Here.
Councilmember Tonason?
Here.
I see you. Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Here.
And Mayor Price?
Here, and Councilwoman Bertani just joined us, so we are a full council.
Here. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, if you would please, our presentation.
Yes, our one and only item for this special meeting, Fast Forward 2021 update, and our presenter is Transportation Manager Diane Feinstein.
And Diane, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening, I have Raul Kumar with us tonight. Raul, you want to bring up the presentation?
Absolutely.
And while he is doing that, I wanted to say good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Diane Feinstein, Fairfield and Sassoon Transit's Transportation Manager. And as you know, FAST has been working the last six months on developing a 10-year strategic plan for how FAST services will be managed post-pandemic. And we're here tonight to provide you with an update on where we're at in that process. And like I mentioned before, I'm here tonight with our COA Comprehensive Operational Analysis Consultant, Raul Kumar from Innovate Mobility. And he's going to update you on what's been accomplished since we started our COA in December 2020. Tonight, we also, after you hear the presentation, we want to get your feedback and guidance on the direction of the COA and what you hear tonight, and other suggestions and input you may have for staff as we move forward into public review of recommendations that are still under development. So there's still, you know, plenty of time for feedback and things. So, Raul, would you like to get us started on what we've been up to the last six months?
Sure, Diane, and thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you again for sharing your time with us. I've met with most of you, or members of my team have met with most of you leading up to where we are today. Our presentation today is brief. I want it to be as informative as possible. Please interrupt me at any time if you have any questions. I promise I'm not going to go more than 10 or 12 minutes. I really want to make sure that we engage in the best Q and A possible, so you're assured of the work that we've done so far and what's left to come. So, I think you've all been brought up to speed about the Comprehensive Operational Analysis. We started back in December. Of the three buckets of work that need to be done, data collection, the community engagement, and the recommendations, we're through about two-thirds of it. So, we did all our data collection in the wintertime, and we have a bit of a unique approach to getting data because of the pandemic. In a typical Comprehensive Operational Analysis transit study, you go out in the bus and you ride the bus. But we all know that that wasn't really all that possible in 2020, and the data that we would get would have skewed some of the results. And so we had other ways of obtaining the data. We've done a lot of our community engagement, including stakeholder interviews, and our market assessment, which is actually, we have conducted phone and email and electronic surveys with a representative population of the cities of Fairfield and Sassoon, and what's left. So, our virtual and in-person town halls, and then the recommendation development. This is something that you probably already know. Fairfield is growing, has been growing, and will continue to grow. Over the next two decades, Fairfield is poised to grow another 8%. Why are we here? And why are we talking about population? Something you obviously know is that transit cannot keep up with population growth. Population, the transit ridership over the last five to 10 years has declined while population has grown. So, while Fairfield provides an excellent service to its citizens and the residents of Sassoon City, it hasn't kept up with how people move today. And another thing you've probably already seen, you live it every single day, is that traffic has simply gotten worse. These dots were probably smaller five or six years ago. But as we've seen traffic, and we've been there firsthand and seen it throughout the day, traffic is a problem. And congestion on your major thoroughfares not only slows you down, but it slows transit down. And it's doubly bad, because the folks that are taking transit now have a more of a disincentive to not take it, because it doesn't go where they need it to go. It hasn't grown enough, and now it's going at a slower pace than driving. So, we're taking all of that into consideration. And as I mentioned, one of the unique things that we have access to is big data on travel patterns. So, we actually have for all of Solano County, how people have moved for the course of all of 2019. So, we know prior to the pandemic where the population centers were coming from, where they're going. And what's pretty clear is that while FAST is an excellent service and really built well, it hasn't, again, been able to keep up with the changing travel patterns. And you'll see in a few slides that something maybe you know, but something I'm seeing in more and more cities across the US is that rush hours are a thing of the past. It's not just your peaks, it's all throughout the day. Another area, in addition to how we gather data, where we think that we've brought a bit of a perspective that, I've shared with a few of you already, but something that we're sharing more broadly now is something we call the Mobility Vulnerability Index. I think many people have heard of the term transit dependency. It's essentially a socioeconomic indicator of how dependent people are on public transportation. I've been in this business 22 and a half, some odd years, and I don't like that term one bit. I don't like choice riders, I don't like transit dependency. Both of those terms do not clearly state the importance that public transportation has on the residents of a city, as well as the businesses, the economics, and so many other things. And so we've shifted that dialogue, especially with the COA. And something I would like us to use more often is what I call the Mobility Vulnerability Index. Essentially, it is an amalgamation of 16 different indicators in the American Community Survey. Things like, definitely the regular things, like education, poverty level, and those kind of things, but also access to cell phones, access to internet, people who live in group quarters, or people who are recently incarcerated, people who don't have vehicles. What this shows us is essentially how vulnerable people are to changes in transportation. I don't mean just transit. I mean, if there is congestion, if there is a cut of existing public transit service, if there are changes in signaling sidewalks, this group is more vulnerable. Now, one of the things you see a lot of red on this map, the Mobility Vulnerability Index is a national indicator. And, but when we zoom in on a city, it looks a lot worse than it actually is. On a scale of zero to one, Fairfield and Sassoon rank right in the middle at 0.49, meaning that your residents are less vulnerable than cities of your size. But still, most of the vulnerability occurs in the heart of Fairfield and in the heart of Sassoon City. And again, please stop me at any time if there's any questions. As part of our--
I'll have a question to ask.
Yes, Councilmember.
In the previous slide, you said rush hour was a thing of the past?
The term rush hour is a thing of the past. The notion that everyone travels at certain peak periods in the morning, and then all of a sudden, traffic dies down after those peak periods, that notion is a thing of the past. I'm going to show you in just a couple of slides how people are actually traveling in Fairfield and Sassoon in the region that shows us that, yep, people are still traveling a lot in the mornings, but it's not dropping down as much as it used to. It's actually kind of plateauing at a much higher level than it used to.
Okay.
I'll share it with you, and we can beat it up. One of the things we did was, again, like I said, we had focus groups and we had a broad questionnaire on the phone. We ensured that we were equitable in how we access people. And one of the really, really nice things we saw is that with some changes, with some modernization, FAST has real potential. The people who weren't using public transit, who would start using public transit again post-pandemic, was the highest that we've seen in California. We are partnering with a national, but very specific to California, market research firm. And 36% is the highest that they saw in California, tied with BART. 63% of those respondents were 35 to 44. And 61% of all people said they would use transit if it was faster and provided better connections. So, we have real upside here. We just have to design a system that meets the needs of your current and your future residents, and all the influx of people that come in on a daily basis for work and medical appointments and things like that. In addition, we also obviously have surveyed riders. And this is important, because rider experience is a very critical component to what we want to design. We don't want it to be the only component, but understanding what are some of the day-to-day travails that people have when they ride transit is important. We spoke with a person with a disability, a person in a wheelchair. She uses the Dial-Ride service to go to dialysis. She has to wait upwards of two to four hours when her dialysis appointment is done to take a service back. And that's not an issue with FAST. That is a very common issue with Dial-Ride and paratransit-type services. We spoke with a nurse who works at the David Graham Medical Center. She has some difficulty understanding the way the routes work. It causes her to kind of miss her bus or go in the wrong direction. And then other, we had a number of people talk about how difficult it is to use transit on Sundays. They're working different shifts. They're working evenings or over the late night on Saturday or during the day on Sunday. And not having access to a mode during that time requires them to have a car. And everyone knows transportation is the second most expensive expense that a household has after housing. And many people, unfortunately, work to own the car that they have, and they own the car to have a job. So what we want to do is really provide a better sort of access. So, based upon all of this, we really will focus on these guiding principles. One is to work collaboratively with the community, use up-to-date data. I talked about the rider experience, and then develop standards. So, what we build isn't just something that you all put in today and, you know, I go off to my next contract, and, you know, Diane is left holding what's left of it. But it's something that the team and that you can use to guide future projects. And as a result, what we've come up with is something I call the Five Big Moves. So, for Fairfield, the Five Big Moves and how we're going to really create the recommendations is here. We're enhancing, focused on enhancing access, building and better connect local communities, better regional connections, more frequent reliable service, and be more operationally sound. And operational includes fiscal. So, we don't want to put something that is unaffordable and unsustainable. Councilmember Tonason, you brought up a great question. So, what did I mean by no rush hour? So, when I say enhancing access, that means we don't just have service at very peak periods. We found almost a third of the trips that were taken in Fairfield and Sassoon happened in the middle of the day. It's by far the busiest period within Fairfield and Sassoon. Definitely, regional travel is still peak-oriented, but in the middle of the day, the cities of Fairfield and Sassoon see their largest influx of trips. This isn't on public transit, this is trips in general. So, if it's taking you longer to get to lunch, if it's taking you longer to start your job, if you start in the middle of the day, this is why. And we want to help address this. We want to better connect local communities. Fairfield and Sassoon are part of a bigger hub and spoke. Not only are they trip generators, but they're also destinations for Vallejo and Vacaville.
Sorry, Raul, can I just ask one more question?
Of course.
And I wouldn't interrupt, but you said we could, so.
Please.
You included lunch in the commute, in the rush hour? You relate those two together?
No, no, I'm saying that, I was probably being a little too cheeky. I'm saying that if you go to lunch at 12 o'clock and it's taking you longer to go get your lunch than it used to, it's because the majority of travel is actually happening in the middle of the day. Your traffic, your, more people are out in the middle of the day at 12 than they are at 8:00 AM in the cities of Fairfield and Sassoon. Does that answer your question?
Not counting the freeway.
Not, no, not counting the freeway. I'm talking within the city itself, not your typical commutes outside. I'm saying within the city itself.
I'm done interrupting, I promise.
No, you're great. Please do, please keep interrupting if you need it. So, better connecting local communities. As I was saying, Fairfield isn't just, Fairfield and Sassoon aren't just trip generators, but they're major destinations, too. Vacaville and Vallejo both come to Fairfield for work, for shopping, for school, for lots of things. And so, understanding how those connections happen across the day, across the month, across the year, is critical. And ensuring those connections continue to happen is a part of this big move about better connecting local communities. Regional, this is really interesting. Fairfield sits at this nexus of providing internal, within the city service, but also major service outside. Almost 600,000 trips on average per month are taken outside of Fairfield to major locations, like Sacramento, Oakland, and the city. And so, we have all that data. So, continuing to support Solano Express and making sure that the trips within Fairfield feed that is a big part of what we're trying to come up with with these recommendations. And the last thing I'm going to leave you with is just a teaser on where we're going with our recommendations. And it's this thing we call microtransit. So, microtransit is essentially app-enabled, technology-enabled Dial-Ride. You can, either with a phone or an app, schedule a vehicle to come and get you on demand and take you to your destination. What we actually have at our firm is a microtransit modeling service. So, what we're able to do is look at how microtransit doesn't just operate by itself, but how it feeds and connects to the existing fixed route service. So, when we talk about microtransit, we see this as really the future of transit in Fairfield and Sassoon, but not all of it. We know that there's still some need for trunk-major corridor service, like Texas and Travis, Pennsylvania, serving the Civic Center, going down to HHS, going down to Cordelia Junction. We still see the need for major transit in there. But we see that microtransit can actually come in and support these routes, feed them, connect people to areas of the city that would be too expensive for FAST to currently do, and do it in a way that is quicker, has a better experience, and is, most importantly, less expensive to you as the city and the funders of this transportation. Where are we? This is my last slide, I promise. We are right where we said we were about six months ago. We are in the public meeting phase. So, right now, we're preparing the preliminary recommendations. We're going to take them out to the public, test them, see what the feedback is, see what they think, bring it back, refine them, and then bring it to you as a recommendation of, this is what your stakeholders have said, this is what the community has said, this is what we, as your consulting firm, has said in congruence with Diane and her team signing off, and give you a service plan for what we call the Now, Near, and Far. So, the next immediate 12 months, one to three years, and then three to five years beyond that. Diane?
Yeah, one thing, a couple of things I wanted to add to that were, one thing that we're going to be geared towards is potentially converting our paratransit vehicles that we can use them as flex shuttles and convert them so that they could be used either on fixed route or for paratransit, and we could potentially group those trips together and make it much more economical. We would use, gradually replace those. We would still have some of the larger gilling buses that you see driving around, but the goal being that we would be providing, more riders would be on the bus. It wouldn't be just one or two riders on a large bus. These would be 10-passenger vehicles where the rides would be grouped, and it would enable us to meet Fairbox Recovery, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission pre-pandemic, and will, again, in the next couple of years, require us to have 20% Fairbox Recovery. Under this scenario, under microtransit, we would not, we would be able to achieve 20% Fairbox Recovery, whereas now, local transit has always been heavily subsidized because it's where the greatest need for the lowest-income population is. So, just wanted to point that out as part of all this, too, that we're, that, as Raul said, we're really looking at financial sustainability, too, and trying to look at things and how to best operate in a post-pandemic world, where there aren't going to be as many commuters. And I know you guys hear about commuter service a lot, but the reality is, the people who need it the most are in our local community. So, with that said, we'll be happy to take any questions, feedback, on whether you guys believe we're headed in the right direction with some of our thoughts and initial recommendations based on initial public feedback, as well as, you know, some of the background and market analysis that Raul's been doing.
Comments or questions, please, colleagues? Councilwoman Bertoni, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you both for a great presentation. My question is regarding regional connections. And I guess my first question is, what percentage of Fairfield residents commute out of Fairfield to either the Bay Area or the Sacramento region? Do you know that?
I do. So of the people that travel, about 6% of the people that travel, travel outside of Fairfield to Davis and Sacramento. And then if you include San Raf, Richmond, Oakland, and San Francisco, I guess I would throw Concord in there too, as, no, I wouldn't consider that the area. It's about 5% total that go out there.
So about 10% of our residents roughly travel out of Fairfield to those two destinations, basically?
That's right, councilmember.
And so of those, how many of those residents are serviced by FAST?
Probably, probably, but, go ahead, Raul.
I'm sorry, Diane, I'm sure you, it's a little tougher of a question because the data that we have is disaggregated and there's no personally identifiable, so we can't go from one service to another. What we did find is 100% of the residents of Fairfield and Sassoon City are, live within three quarters of a mile of a bus stop. Now, that doesn't mean that they live within three quarters of a mile of a Solano Express or that they can transfer easily. It just means that the population lives within three quarters of a mile of a bus stop.
I may be able to help put a little bit of perspective, maybe not be able to give you exact percentage, but to give you an idea, both pre-pandemic and during the pandemic, two-thirds of FAST ridership has always been local service. A lot of people don't realize that. We used to have approximately 600,000 people that rode local service, about 380,000 rode commuter service, and a very small percentage, probably 25,000, rode our DART service. So there is, we don't sell the story as well as we should have in the past of the local service, but two-thirds of our budget, two-thirds of our ridership has always been towards, toward local service. It's just that because our fares are lower, we never get a high fare box recovery, so there always has to be a dedicated effort to fund local service. But we're trying to mix the two together to be able to provide good fare box recovery in the same way that commuter service is able to do that. You know, we charge $1.75, commuter service charges either $5 or $5.75.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm just trying to address is the fact that we have a significant portion of our, percentage of our residents who go out of Fairfield every day and have to come back, and that's me included. And for many years, I've commuted to either Oakland, you know, region or San Francisco region, and I don't know, and I'm on the city council, I don't know how FAST can help me make that trip so that I don't have to drive my vehicle that burns, you know, 18 gallons per, miles per gallon. I mean, so I'm just saying, I mean, I think there's a significant amount of residents in Fairfield who commute out of here to basically those two destinations, and I'm just not sure how we're servicing them, let alone the folks who want to come to Fairfield on the weekends and Vacaville and Vallejo for destination trips, basically. So I just, you know, I'm just wondering if you've contemplated that.
Yeah, and Diane, I can take that question if you'd like. So councilmember, that's an absolutely critical point of what we're looking at, is feeding your Solano Express regional services, the ones that go to Sacramento and the ones that go down to the Bay Area. And this is where microtransit really comes in. So today, I imagine you'd have, you're probably within three quarters mile of a bus stop, but that bus stop might be one or two transfers away from actually reaching a Solano Express route. Once you reach that Solano Express route, then you've got another 45 minutes to an hour commute. So what we're trying to do with microtransit and the fixed route is service the high-density corridors as quickly as possible. So FAST, frequent, high seat turnover, that means one person gets on, travels for about two miles, hops off, another person comes and takes that seat. And then the rest of the area, if you're not on those major corridors, you're going to have access to this microtransit. So Diane did an awesome job of describing the conversion of paratransit and the dialyride vehicles to this microtransit service. We think that we can actually reach the rest of Fairfield that isn't on these high-density corridors in about 16 to 20 minutes with a microtransit service. So much more frequent than what you would have to do. You'd essentially push a button or make a phone call. It would take you to a new, to a park and ride. You wouldn't even have to worry about parking. It would take you to whatever destination. And from that park and ride, you'd get on, it'd be timed so that Solano Express would come and take you to your ultimate, your ultimate destination, same thing on the way back.
Okay, thank you.
Apologize for the long answer there.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Well, Diane, Raul, thank you very much. Do appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members.
Thank you.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you. And we are adjourned until the regular council meeting starts in about four minutes. So thank you very much, colleagues. To order, please. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
I'll just wait one minute here.
Okay.
There we go. Councilmember Bertoni?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tim?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yeah.
And Mayor Price.
They're all here. So the invocation this evening will be led by Worship Pastor Jeff Hood, First Baptist Church. Pastor, if you would begin, please.
Surely. Let's pray together. Lord, I thank you for what you do in our lives, and I thank you for how you are able to guide us. I pray that you would be with the council tonight, be with the mayor, be with what is discussed, so that things can be decided, things can be looked at that are going to make our city better for the future. We appreciate the fact that these folks have our best interests at heart, and I pray that you would help them to make the decisions that need to be made in order for the best for our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And Councilwoman Moy, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we'll begin with council reports, please. And we have a long agenda this evening, so make your report as succinct as you can, but to the point. Thank you. Any council reports?
Councilmember Bertoni?
Mr. Mayor, really quickly, I just want to thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Tonison, and I want to thank our city manager and our staff for the great Fairfield Community Action Network, or Fairfield CAN, meeting that we had last week. We had about 25 pastors who have come out and pledged their support to this mission that we have, where Fairfield CAN will be working hand-in-hand with the city council, advising us on policy matters and making sure that what we're doing on the dais is relevant to their parishioners and to the community. So our next meeting is on June 22nd. It's the fourth Tuesday of every month. We're meeting in Willow Hall at the Civic Center, and I'm very excited about the prospects of this organization doing some great things in the city, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports, please? Mr. Vice Mayor Vicaro, please.
Yeah, real quick, Mayor, I just want to congratulate all the seniors this year who had a very tough end of their junior year and a very tough senior year this year through the pandemic, and they deserve all the credit in the world, along with the teachers and along with the parents that had to endure this pandemic. And I know, being a lifelong educator and mayor, I know you know as well, it's very difficult under these circumstances, but they did endure and they did well, and congratulations to the classes, not only of 2021, but also 2020, because they all deserve it. They didn't get that chance to graduate and walk, but they are now, so my hats off to them. So that's my report, Mayor.
Excellent report. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Moy, please, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for going to the memorial service yesterday. Last year, we did not have that, and it was very poignant this year, as it always is. I did, just the reason why I want to report on this too, beyond us being there to represent this city, is that I met a, well, I've known a veteran who was there for a long time, and it turns out that he recently, because of the pandemic, became homeless. And he's living on the streets of Fairfield right now. I'm trying to get him help, as well as others are trying to help him. But it always goes back to, we aren't doing the right things yet. We should not have any veterans on the streets anywhere. So I appreciate all of my colleagues' work on this, and I'm looking for a change. So anyway, thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that Councilwoman Tonison and I rode along with our homeless intervention team, I think about, I guess it was last week, and I just wanted to make a comment about what a phenomenal group of, you know, these, this team is amazing. There's just, we rode along and it was very eye-opening. We got to see them in action, and I was so impressed with how professional and compassionate they were with the individuals that we made contact with that day. And we also did get to see the Hart team in action as well, doing some cleanup. I think it's over at Dan Wilson Creek. So it was very, it was, I was appreciative of the opportunity to ride along and truly see what they have to deal with day in and day out, and the amazing work that they're doing to make our community a better place, not just for our residents, but also the residents that are, you know, living in the encampments and trying to connect them to resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Well, let me just share one quick one with you. We did the ribbon cutting at a very popular dog park, Alumet Park, last weekend. It was wonderful. Driving there, I saw people walking their dogs more than just one or two blocks to get there, and the dogs had a good time. All the staff who were there had a wonderful time. The city manager and I really enjoyed ourselves. And I'll just, one little note, that there were two dogs in a remotely controlled convertible, and those two dogs, you would have thought were experienced drivers. Anyway, thank you very much for participating, and we're going to adjourn our meeting this evening in honor and memory of David Mariano, a local fellow, wonderful man, and he passed away yesterday. And I talked to him very briefly at the Memorial Day Service, had no idea that he was that not well. So we'll be adjourned in his memory, please. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just really quickly, our next city council meeting on June 15th, I believe it is, will be in-person. That is our recommendation. The county has announced that tomorrow, Solano County will move into the orange tier. So be prepared for that. We will have it set up so that if you do need to be via Zoom, we'll talk with our tech folks to make sure that you're still able to participate in that, but we'll be in-person at the new city hall or at the new council chambers, and we will have prior to that, a ribbon cutting for the new council chambers. So that schedule will get out to you here soon.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. City Attorney, your report.
No report at this time.
Madam Clerk, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I wanted to let the community know that we're in need of volunteers for our Fourth of July parade, happening on Fourth of July, of course, on a Sunday this year. It's back, and there will be family activities following the parade. The parade starts at 10:00. But we do need lots of volunteers. I've put it out on all our social media channels, and you can also contact me, Karen Reese, 428-7767, or you can email me. Anyway, that is all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have two presentations, and the first one is marketing and outreach update. Bill, you're on, please.
Hello, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Doing well, doing well, thank you.
Good, good. Let me share my screen. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Looking good.
Good evening, community, good evening, councilmembers, mayor councilmembers. My name's Bill Way, Communications Manager. I don't want to take too much time this evening. I just wanted to do a quick marketing and outreach update, also known as MOD. As we know, the 50th anniversary date just passed last Saturday. Vice Mayor Vicaro read the proclamation at the last council meeting, and we have a few more items in store in the coming months. If you've noticed around the campus, we have various banners around the buildings, the campus buildings. We've got some commemorative pins that were ordered. We handed those out to council and department heads. They're also available upon emailing me. They will be available while supplies last. We've also incorporated some digital signage, and we have some banners that have quotes and have some fun facts about city hall and the whole idea and vision of bringing the Civic Center to life. Now, one of the exciting things we have to announce is we have a documentary that's going to be premiering on Saturday. Now, one of the exciting things we have to announce is we have a documentary that's going to be premiering on Saturday, June fifth at seven P M. It'll be, you could watch it on Comcast Cable, you could watch it on YouTube, and you could watch it on demand. Um this is going to have original footage um shot during the actual groundbreaking, not groundbreaking, ribbon cutting. Um we have artists and architectural renderings. We also have interviews with the original architect, if you can believe that. Um he was forty-three back then. He is ninety-three now, and he looks great. We're so excited to be able to premiere this documentary on Saturday. Once again, pins are available if you email me at W A at Fairfield dot C A dot gov while supplies last. Um just real quick, I wanted to show you and make sure I have my sound. I wanted to show a quick trailer of the documentary. I think I I realized early on the Civic Center would be a big decision for the city for generations to come, and it ought to be done right. So make sure to tune in, seven P M. on Saturday, the fifth. Now, we also have some exciting news to add to this. Um our marketing outreach division won gold again in the National Telly Awards. It's a national composition competition. It's jug- judged among our peers, people in the film and television industry. We won the gold for the fire department video we did serving up safety for fire prevention. We also won the coveted silver for the State of the City video starring yours truly, not yours truly, but our illustrious uh city manager, Stefan Chatwin. We also received silver for City Hall Safety, um which was a COVID-related City Hall Safety video. We won a ton of bronze for a lot of our um our programming, for food and things to do in Fairfield, and our series Economic Develop, yeah, I'm sorry, Economic Notes, which is hosted by Assistant City Manager David Gassaway. So exciting times. Gold is, we've been entering this contest since nineteen ninety-nine, and we've won two gold since then. So this is, this is a big deal for us. I want to um give special thanks to Whitney Skilman, leading the charge with the video staff and bringing home the gold once again. This is two years in a row. Um please watch us. You, there's pretty much a device that you can't see us on. There's, I mean, there's none. I mean, channel twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are available on Cablecast. They're available on Comcast Xfinity, Apple TV, U T, AT&T U-verse. If that's not enough, you can watch us on social media. We have podcasts that are available on Spotify and Apple Podcasts. And with that, if not enough, we now have an AM radio station that'll be able to provide provide emergency information and any type of imminent danger to to people or property. So please save a preset on your car radio to Fairfield sixteen seventy AM. Right now, we have information on disaster preparedness, evacuation education. So in the, in the event of a fire emergency, natural disaster, you could tune to Fairfield sixteen seventy and get information over the radio, as well as social media, signing up for Nixle and signing up for Alert Solano as well. But just a nice addition of having AM radio. We we are now on the airwaves, and it's just one more way of communicating to our residents in any type of imminent danger. Um I don't want to take too much of your time. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, you could email me or give me a call at four-two-eight-seven-six-one-one. I appreciate everyone allowing me to take these times. And uh if you have any questions, let me know.
Well, thank you very much, Bill, and and your team as well. And we have another presentation now. Madam Clerk, be with, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um our Vice Mayor, Rick Vicaro, will present the LGBTQ Pride Month Proclamation. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very proud to read this proclamation. I believe I've read it the last couple of years, and I know that we are going to have uh an item later on to discuss the uh line of the flags. So um I'll begin. So um lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, June twenty twenty-one. Whereas fifty-one years ago, in June nineteen sixty-nine, a riot at a Manhattan gay bar, the Stonewall Inn, in retaliation to a police raid precipitated the modern fight for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer LGBTQ rights. And whereas, because of acts of courage from those who demanded justice and from those who quietly pushed for progress, our nation has made great strides in recognizing what these brave individuals long knew to be true in their hearts, that love is love and that no person should be judged by anything but the content of their character. And whereas twenty fifteen's landmark Supreme Court decision was a historic victory for LGBTQ Americans, guaranteeing marriage equality in all fifty states, ensuring dignity for same-sex couples and therefore all couples. And whereas, for every partnership that was not previously recognized under the law and for every American who was denied their basic civil rights, this monumental ruling instilled newfound hope, affirming the belief that we are all freer when we are all treated as equal. And whereas, despite this extraordinary progress, LGBTQ Americans still face discrimination simply for being who they are, and there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every American. And whereas, in memory of the forty-nine victims of the twenty sixteen Pulse nightclub massacre in Orlando, transgender individuals murdered for who they are and a history of violence against our community, it is ever more important that we continue to push for equality, protections, and acceptance of the LGBTQ people everywhere. And whereas, twenty twenty-one is the twenty-second year of the LGBTQ community coming together to show our pride in Solano County through service and support of the LGBTQ community in the organization known as Solano Pride Center and Vallejo Gay Network. And whereas, the LGBTQ community was hit harder than most by the COVID nineteen pandemic because of healthcare disparities and economic instabilities. And whereas, during lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, as we wave our flags of pride high and march boldly forward in parades and demonstrations, let us celebrate how far we have come and reaffirm our steadfast belief in the equal dignity of all Americans. Whereas, the city of Fairfield proudly stands with the LGBTQ community and with all communities who struggle for basic human rights, for acceptance, visibility, safety, acknowledgement, and equitable equitability in the quest for full equality under the law. Therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-one as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month in the city of Fairfield to remind everyone to work together to advance the principles upon which our great nation was founded and to celebrate the great diversity of Fairfield. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh you know, I need to defer to Greg here real quick, see if there's anything he wants to address at this time. If not, we'll move forward.
Uh no, not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay, then, Madam Clerk, process for public comments, please. And because we have a lengthy agenda, the limit will be two minutes per speaker. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. Instructions for when joining via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone to request to speak. You will be called on by name, and we'll have two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will now convene the meeting of the Housing Authority, please, and Madam Clerk, if you would, read the notice.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have speakers.
We have speakers.
Okay, I just need to read this one statement. The ho- holding of a joint meeting of the city council and Housing Authority.
Karen, before you read that, I think we we don't want to go into that yet. We do have some speakers for public comments.
Oh, okay.
That was my error. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have, first to speak is Larry Ortega. Go ahead, Larry. You're on.
Thank you, city council members, Mr. Mayor, and and staff. My name's Larry Ortega. I am a thirty-year technology veteran, and I have been promoting the elimination of the digital divide in the state of California for the last twenty years. There is a a bill sponsored by Senator Dodd, your senator here, that uh intends to take away your local right to the placement of antennas and uh cell towers, and it's being done under the auspices of closing the digital divide. The digital divide, there's many attributes to the digital divide. Primary to that is pricing, price of service. That is the primary issue. None of the language in Senator Dodd's bill addresses pricing. And it makes almost the, it makes it almost irrelevant, the fact that they're putting, the fact that the digital divide is is going to be solved. It will not be solved by any stretch of the imagination. What this bill is intended to do is take away your local power as it relates to placement of antennas and placement of towers. I would encourage you, the city council, to contact Senator Dodd and inquire as to, you know, what what the purpose is, because the digital divide should not be used as the primary issue why why this needs to happen. There are uh dangerous uh health impacts.
Thirty seconds, please.
Technology, and I would encourage you also to to be wary of that. A lot have been, has been placed on the FCC's uh comments that thi- this technology is safe. But in a January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one hearing at the Ninth Sixth Circuit District Court, the General Counsel for the FCC admitted that she did not follow protocol, or the FCC did not follow protocol in setting wireless safety standards. So the whole commentary about the language that the FCC says it's safe.
Time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May.
Ms. Moyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Mr. City Manager, um could we have staff look into uh this legislation a little closer? I know it has come up on our weeklies um and uh for us to um perhaps decide whether we're going to oppose um on the city council.
Yeah, and we're uh going through that right now, and and absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Bill.
Next, we have Jenny Huff. Okay, Jenny, you are on.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for the Pride Proclamation for this year and the following years um previously. Um I just wonder if there's any way that we will be able to fly the flag here in Fairfield. I know we support uh members of the um community here, and I just would really love to see as a resident of downtown uh driving by when I go home, seeing that 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 pride flag flying as I as I come home in the afternoons. I would just really love to see that, and thank you so much for your uh proclamation this year. Uh that that's my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sheri. It's either Sheri Steph or Sheri Stith. Go ahead, Sheri, you're on.
Good evening to the mayor and to everyone that is there this evening, all the city council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Good. My name is Sheri Stith, and I'm an active real estate broker here in Solano County, as well as the past president of the Solano Realtors. Yeah, I have a situation, and I've emailed each and every one of you. It's quite lengthy. I've sent all the attachments. I know I only have two minutes, so I'm going to be very brief. Um I have been, my client and I, I'm representing a a company called Honestly It's Life. It's a nonprofit organization here in Solano County. We were blatantly discriminated against in the city fair, in the city of Fairfield regarding leasing commercial space. Now, this address is over on North Texas Street. I spoke with the owner. He's never met me. He never saw me in person. After speaking with him for quite some time, the first time over about a half an hour or so, he referred me to a tenant. That particular tenant shows the property on his behalf, not as a real estate person or as a broker, but just because she's there. He's in Southern California. And so upon uh my arrival, along with my co-pastor, she asked us what was the purpose of the business. And I told her it's various businesses along with the church. Well, her immediate response was
Thirty seconds, Sheri, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yeah, thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So, long story short, uh she basically said that there's a, we are a Hispanic church. There's a Caucasian church across the street, and you are. And I said, we're black Americans. And she said, oh, they'll never rent this space to you. I said, uh, they better be careful. That's blatant discrimination. Well, the very next week, he decided to withdraw. So there's a lot of information. I just wanted to bring it before.
Sorry, your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask that the city manager look into this? Whenever I hear the words blatant discrimination, those raise um red flags to me. And so I have not had an opportunity to review all of the information. I have reviewed some of the information, and it looks very troublesome to have people in this city who are discriminating against African Americans, period, or or anyone else, for that matter. So um but this looks directly um discriminatory. Like I said, I haven't looked at all the evidence, but what I have seen is very troublesome, and I would like us to look into this closer and to have a report back on this, please.
Yes, ma'am. I will. I'll get with uh I'll get with Greg, and we'll uh we'll we'll move forward with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, um I would also like to say that I did reply to Ms. Stith already. I forwarded it to um uh the city manager, and I believe to the city attorney, I'm not sure, and asked for them to do just what uh Councilwoman Bertoni asked. Um I also, I read all of it, and um it is outrageous on the face. So I appreciate um a report coming back as as I asked earlier and for help for them. Thank you.
Thank you for your second. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Jonathan Cook. Jonathan, you are on.
Uh good evening. This is Jonathan Cook. I am the Executive Director of Solano Pride Center. Thank you, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Vicaro, and the city council for your Pride Proclamation this year and in previous years. Uh I am uh joining public comment to request that you uh consider raising the pride flag for the month of June for the first time in Fairfield's history. Um I did have a chance to send an email to uh each of you and the city manager uh outlining uh an example of a flag policy from my friends in the city of Dublin. Uh you would be joining Solano County, uh Benicia, Vallejo, Solano Community College, and other jurisdictions in our immediate area who uh do that. I was at two of those pride flag raisings this morning, and both Benicia and Vallejo. And I think it would be a great symbol to And I think it would be a great symbol to, uh, the residents of Fairfield, myself, my partner, many, many others, uh, that Fairfield celebrates this great diversity and, uh, represents the modern and diverse city that Fairfield has become. Um, I also would, uh, like to, uh, join in support of this with Chief Cantrell. She and I had an opportunity to speak about this. And, uh, uh, I have the opportunity and honor to serve on the Police Audit Committee with her as an advisory board member. And, uh, it's an honor to be able to serve in that capacity, but I, I think it would also be wonderful to reflect that diversity now that we have an out lesbian police chief. Uh, I've already spoken with the, uh, City Manager and thanked him for such a quality hire, not because she's a lesbian, because she's an excellent police chief. Uh, so thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you for recognizing LGBTQ Pride Month as you have in previous years. And, uh, let's go the next step and raise the pride flag. We will be providing the flag to each of the cities and jurisdictions in Solano County who choose to raise it this year.
Sorry, ten seconds left.
Any money, and we'll donate to, uh, direct it to you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I have no more requests to speak cards.
So, I will now convene the meeting of the Housing Authority, please. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bertoni?
Here.
Commissioner Moy?
I'm here.
Commissioner Panduro?
Here.
Commissioner Tim?
Here.
Commissioner Tonison?
Here.
Vice Chair Vaccaro?
Here.
And Chairman Price?
Here, unanimous.
And now I'll read the statement. I apologize, um, grabbed the wrong page earlier. Uh, "The holding of a joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of thirty-five dollars for attending this joint meeting." And there's just the one item, it's a public hearing. Resolu-, public hearing and resolution HA twenty-two-one dash zero-seven of the Fairfield Housing Authority approving the disposition and development agreement between the Fairfield Housing Authority and Solano Napa Habitat for Humanity, authorizing the sale of land located on Walner Avenue, APN zero-zero-two-eight dash two-eighty dash two-ten and zero-zero-two-eight dash two-eighty dash three-hundred to Solano Napa Habitat for Humanity, finding that such authorization is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and taking related actions. And our presenter this evening, I believe, is Jesus Morales.
Mr. Chair, Board Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Jesus, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Um, I had a PowerPoint presentation, I'm not sure if we were able to get it to you on time. Uh, Bill, uh, did we get that PowerPoint presentation?
Um, I received a copy, but you, um, are supposed to screen share your own presentation.
Can you see my screen?
Okay, there we go. We can see it now, Jesus.
Uh, this is a public hearing, uh, seeking approval for the disposition and development agreement between the Fairfield Housing Authority and Solano Napa Habitat for Humanity, authorizing the sale of land on Walner Avenue for the development of three homes targeted to low-income households. Previously to this, uh, prior actions by the Housing Authority Board on October twenty, the Board, uh, approved action declaring the property surplus land. And, uh, correction, that's actually the City Council approved action declaring the property, uh, exempt surplus land. And the Board approved a resolution on January twenty-one, transferring the property from the FHA for the promotion of affordable housing. Part of the negotiation between Solano Habitat for Humanity and the FHA, we had appraisal on the land completed. The value was determined to be zero. Uh, this is attributed to the fact that the property is in a flood zone, and the cost of grading the land too elevated to a point where it's above the flood zone exceeds the value of the property if it was in a buildable condition. Uh, we entered into, uh, negotiations with Habitat and came up with a development suspicious agreement that you have before you in the staff report. Here are some of the terms of the DDA. Uh, the FHA will transfer the property to Habitat for Zero. Habitat will provide the FHA a project budget and commitment of all funding to complete grading and construction of all project units. Uh, they'll also provide other information that you see listed there. I think the other key points I wanted to point out that, uh, Habitat, uh, will come close escrow on the property by July sixteen, twenty-twenty-one. They have agreed to build three homes that will be provided as ownership homes with affordability covenants recorded on each of the properties for forty-five years. Habitat needs to complete, excuse me, uh, beginning construction of the homes within twelve to eighteen months after the close of escrow and complete construction of the homes within twenty-four months after the close of escrow. Uh, here's a depiction of the homes that, uh, Habitat will be building. Uh, each home will comprise three bedrooms and two baths with approximately one thousand two hundred eighty-one square feet of living area. All the buyers of these homes have to be Habitat program guidelines, including contribution of sweat equity hours. Uh, the properties will be sold at an affordable price to be determined at that point in time to low-income households. Habitat will fully finance the, uh, sale of the property to the new homeowners by carrying back a first and a second mortgage. And as I mentioned earlier, there will be affordability covenants recorded on each of the homes for forty-five years. Habitat is committing to fundraising funds for, uh, solicit, uh, material and obtain donations for construction of the homes. Habitat has also received a grant of two hundred thousand dollars of Solano County that will help them mitigate, uh, the flood zone grading. Uh, and that has a, uh, target for expenditures, and they'll be able to meet that, uh, deadline by getting, uh, acquisition of the property once the Board has approved the DDA. That concludes the presentation. I'm available for any questions. Also, um, on live, I believe, is the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, Andrew Killen, and also Board Member Jerry Raykra.
Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Jesus, for the presentation. Um, so I grew up around the corner on Raleigh, so I've walked that space many, many times. And so it's good to hear that there'd be something, that there's going to be something built there. Um, so I was going to ask, have the neighbors in that area been notified of this construction? And how far out from that space did you go if you did notify them? And if you have heard anything back from those individuals?
Yes, and I believe, uh, staff with Habitat for Humanity, and maybe if we can get Jerry on the, uh, to come on board and respond to that. My understanding is that they passed out, uh, close to several hundred flyers to neighbors in that area. I don't know the extent. Uh, Jerry, are you on? And could you maybe give us a little bit more perspective on that?
You know?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we, we prepared a, um, a two-sided legal, legal-sized paper flyer that, uh, detailed what it is we proposed. We provided some history of Habitat. We made a point of making sure that the residents, uh, knew that these were ownership houses, not rental houses. We also made it, uh, very clear that we sell, uh, the houses at fair market value. Uh, we get to affordability through the mortgage, not through the sale of the house. So, um, because people generally are concerned with their own property values. So, uh, in effect, this will have the benefit of actually improving their property values because there will be three current sales. And, um, we went out five hundred feet, uh, from the project, uh, consistent with the, the, uh, noticing requirement of the city. Um, and we provided, we made, made it clear that this public hearing was taking place. Uh, we circulated the flyers a week ago. Uh, we gave them the date, uh, and the time of the hearing. Uh, and we also provided a phone number for Habitat and invited people to, uh, respond if they had questions. And, uh, according to Andrew, as of today, Andrew Colleen, our Executive Director, uh, we have, we heard no, uh, responses. Okay.
Councilwoman Moy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Jerry, for that information. This is a question for either the City Manager or the City Attorney. Um, I'm wondering, since we are going to be building more affordable housing, does this count towards our affordable housing stock once it's completed?
I can answer that question.
Oh, okay, Jesus, all righty, thank you.
So, uh, this will help us meet some of our, uh, RINA numbers, uh, because we are recording the affordability covenants on these properties for forty-five years. So in this case, we'll get at least three low-income units, uh, potentially, if the buyer happens to be lower income, then we will get credit in that particular area. So this will help us with our RINA numbers.
Thank you, Jesus, and thank you for a really good presentation in your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Vaccaro, please.
Thank you, Mayor, real quick. Uh, thank you, Jesus, and I just want to thank, um, Habitat for Humanity, uh, Jerry, especially Jerry who spoke tonight. I know that these are, these are very selfless people who do so much work for our city and provide housing for people that need it so badly. So I just wanted to kind of put a shout out to that whole organization, and thank you, Jerry, for speaking tonight and clarifying some things.
Any other comments or questions? I will open the public hearing then. Do you have any requests to speak cards, Madam Clerk?
No, we do not.
Okay. Seeing that, I will close the public hearing, bring it back for council action. In a motion to approve resolution HA two-thousand twenty-two-one dash zero-seven?
I'll move.
Been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Bertoni. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Commissioner Bertoni?
Yes.
Commissioner Moy?
Yes.
Commissioner Panduro?
Yes.
Commissioner Tim?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonison? Vice Chair Vaccaro?
Yes.
And Chairman Price?
Yes, motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. We'll now convene the meeting of the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District. The PBMMD consent calendar, please.
And, Mr. Mayor, although this is a consent item, uh, it is something that, uh, if we can get Paul on now, uh, I would like Paul to maybe make, uh, a few statements here before the council is, uh, asked to take any action on this.
Paul, thank you very much.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Paul.
Good evening, Chair Price and Board Members. Paul Costello, your Public Works Director. Um, I also have, uh, our district engineer, Ryan Puganeman, he's, he's on here as well with us. And we just wanted to, uh, provide a brief status update, um, as to where we are with the PBMMD, as well as share, uh, some background on staff's rationale for arriving at the recommended assessment rate, uh, for this upcoming fiscal year, uh, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. So, some of you may recall, uh, this time, about this time last year, the Board heard, um, and received written protests from some of the, the district residents, um, on the proposed assessment rates for the current fiscal year, twenty-dash twenty-twenty-one. Uh, residents, some of the residents questioned the growing reserve, which was, is around one point four million, and whether it was necessary to continue to raise assessments by the allowed CPI increase if the annual operations and maintenance expenses were actually lower than budgeted. And so in response, the Board requested that staff perform an in-depth review of the district's financial and operational activities. This included identifying a different geotechnical engineer or subject matter expert to, one, assist with, with setting an appropriate annual budget, and, two, evaluate and recommend what a, what an optimal reserve goal amount would be for the district. And then this work would inform future assessment rates. So since August of last year, um, at that Board meeting, an ad hoc committee was essentially was created. Uh, two, uh, resident, um, residents of the district volunteered, um, to work with city staff. Um, and two staff, along with these two residents, have, have formed this ad hoc committee. And since August of last year, um, uh, they've been working to advance this, this, um, this work. Uh, six weeks ago, uh, during, uh, your April twentieth Board meeting, uh, staff provided a brief overview and update. And with your approval, we've hired Cal Engineering and Geology as the district's new subject matter expert. Uh, and then last week, on May twenty-sixth, uh, Wednesday, uh, staff held a virtual neighborhood meeting for interested residents of the district. And during that meeting, uh, staff provided a more in-depth update on tasks completed to date and answered questions from the residents. There are approximately two hundred sixteen parcels currently within PBMMD, uh, and approximately twenty residents attended the neighborhood meeting. So now with the new geotechnical, excuse me, geotechnical engineer now on board, uh, we expect to have a reserve study, um, and a comprehensive, comprehensive review of all the technical documents completed by this August or September of this year. Until that work is complete, and since we don't know yet what the reserve study will suggest in the way of a reserve goal, staff is recommending that we maintain, and not reduce or increase, but maintain the current reserve balance. So with the help of the new engineer, we've identified and planned work for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two that totals approximately two hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. And this, the budget is included as part of the agenda packet. And so if, if assessment rates, uh, are maintained at the current level with no increase, uh, for the coming fiscal year, district revenues would total approximately two hundred twenty-six thousand. So just to, let's see, uh, repeat, uh, approximately two hundred twenty-two thousand in expected expenses and revenues of two hundred twenty-six thousand. So roughly balancing. So in other words, maintaining the current assessment, assessment levels, which is staff's recommendation, this would create a near balance between revenues and expenses. This means we'll, we'll neither significantly dip into reserves or we won't add to reserve balance. So then, lastly, um, before we pause for questions, I, I wanted to provide some clarification on the action before you tonight, which is to provide preliminary approval of the engineer's report and, and to provide the notice of the public hearing, which will be on July sixth. On July sixth, well, your action to approve an assessment rate will be requested at that time. So that, that includes my, concludes my presentation. Uh, again, Ryan and I are here, um, to answer any questions you may have.
And just to add also is that the purpose of the public hearing is that all affected parties can testify and express their views at that point in time. And that, that's why this is on consent tonight. The hearing will be on the sixth of July.
Councilman Tim to be followed by Councilwoman Moy, and then the, Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, Paul, how much money do we spend a year there? Do you know how much we spent last year?
Yeah, so this, this current year, uh, if that's what you're asking, um, this current fiscal year, which we're still in, uh, where the projections are that we're going to finish right around a hundred thousand in expenses. But I guess what, one thing that we're doing is now that we have the new engineer on board, um, we are. um, we are increasing the amount of work here in the upcoming fiscal year. We're, and the intent is really putting the, the assessment dollars to work. And so that is a change from the prior years. Um, there are additional, um, work items, including the assessment study, right? The reserve goal study that will take money to, 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 um, to advance. Uh, but then also some maintenance activities, like cleaning out drainage ditches and those kind of things.
Do you anticipate spending roughly 200,000 dollars a year ongoing now?
Uh, no, and I'll let maybe Ryan, if you could help answer that one. The 200,000 roughly is for this upcoming fiscal year. But Ryan, do you have any insight as to going forward at this time?
Yes, uh, Councilman Tim. So this initial 200,000 that we're looking at for fiscal year 21, 22, um, as Paul alluded to, there is, um, a significant amount of work, um, with CE and G that we're going to have to do now. Um, and they're going to help us set what our ongoing budget will be. So preliminarily, we don't, we don't anticipate that that full 200,000 will be ongoing, but we'll really know in, in the upcoming years what that, what that amount will be.
And does that include, uh, city expenses as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
In past years, just, oh, I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
No, go, no, go ahead.
In past years, historically, um, the city has not been, um, invoicing since it is a separate, since, uh, the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District is its own separate entity apart from the city. Uh, we have not been, but this fiscal year, that is something that we did look at, and that is something that's included with the current budget.
Okay, and, and you explain this to the ad hoc committee, because one of the things, you know, after your last meeting, I'm sure all our inboxes were flooded and that, you know, they keep putting money in, nothing ever really gets spent, and it's amounting to about a hundred dollars a month. And I just want to make sure that we're communicating with them so they understand where this, where the money in the future is going to go and how much it could be. So, so to clarify, a, a, an affirmed vote tonight just gets it to the next stage of a public hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, we'll save a multitude of questions and inbox emails for the next one. But thank you for your time, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Moy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question is, um, about putting rates, voting on them when they come back, um, but before we've had the study completed, that doesn't make any sense to me, um, when I'm looking at things right now and the, uh, the history of expenditure there just isn't, it just isn't there, um, to continue with the rates this high. Um, I understand that we, you know, are just going to vote tonight to bring it to a public meeting, but I, I really, uh, would caution against voting on, um, setting rates until we have that study in front of us. It makes no sense to me, um, because it may need to change, and right now I think they're being overcharged. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
No question, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Paul, for a great study. So what is the purpose for preliminarily approving the report tonight if we're going to have the hearing, um, in the future?
I can answer that question, Councilwoman Bertani. If state law requires that, so there is a very prescribed procedure that the council has to go through, and it is a two-step process. And the first process is the, uh, preliminary approval, which then really puts, sets up the, uh, the public hearing on what is being proposed, but then you're not bound by your decision until the public hearing.
Okay, so it's a notice function?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Collins? Councilman Tonison, please.
All right, thank you, Paul. And Paul, we had this, uh, we had a conversation, um, earlier this week, and do the, will the assessment stop or reduce at any time?
Well, that's partly what we're, we're trying to find out, and that's why staff's recommendation this time is to maintain the current assessment levels, because until the study is complete, we don't know what the recommendation's going to be. We're not the subject matter experts here. We're going to lean heavily on, um, on our new geotechnical engineer. Um, this is a very specialized field. There's only a few geotechnical engineers that actually do this work for, for the 30-some-odd, uh, GAD districts that are in the state. Um, and so, um, that is a possibility, uh, council member, that based on what the study shows or what it, what the recommendations are, it could be where assessment's lower in future years. But on the, on the flip side, it could be where they're increased, because they could say, no, you're doing great on, on this reserve, on the reserve balance that you currently have, but you actually need this much because of all this work then study that we've done on the 10 years in existence of the district. Uh, and based on what we know in managing other districts around the state, here's what the, what your reserve goal should be. And so, yes, it could be reduced, it could be increased, it could, you know, uh, go on, you know, pause, so to speak, um, if we're sitting, you know, sitting really well at 1.4 million. Um, so any could happen.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So based upon the city attorney's recommendation, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution PBMMD 2021-03.
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved by Councilman Tim. Is there a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Member Bertani?
Yes.
Member Moy?
Yes.
Member Panduro?
Yes.
Member Tim?
Yes.
Member Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Chair Vicaro?
Yes.
And Chairman Price?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And at this point, I'll reconvene the meeting of the city council. The consent calendar, please. Madam Clerk, if you would read that introductory statement, please.
Yes, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
And Mayor and council members, I have, uh, an additional, uh, comment to make tonight, and this is actually an improvement in our process. Uh, in the past, when we have our, um, assessment districts and CFDs, uh, each of you have to abstain, uh, when you live in that particular area. And there's been clarification from the EPPC that as long as, uh, each of you do not get some bene- special benefit in this district where you're paying the same rate as everybody else, uh, there's not a conflict of interest, and therefore there's no need to go through these abstentions. So we just have finally come to that confirmation here, uh, just very recently. So your agenda notes, uh, uh, conflict of interest and need to abstain. Uh, in fact, now you not need to do that, and so we can all just vote on this in the normal course, and when it comes back for the hearing likewise, will not need to abstain in these, uh, districts where you reside.
Do we have any request to speak cards on these items? Seeing none, entertain a motion then to approve the consent calendar as submitted. It's been moved by Councilwoman Bertani, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Yes, Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. We turn now to new business. Item number 20, Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, item 20, Resolution 2021-125 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, adopting the Heart of Fairfield Downtown roadmap, Business and Industrial Parks roadmap, and Marketing and Business Attraction roadmap as components of the Economic Development Strategic Plan for the City of Fairfield and authorizing the city manager to take certain actions related thereto. And our presenter will be Senior Economic Development Manager Jorge Barrera.
Good evening, Mayor Price and council members. Jorge Barrera, representing the Economic Development Division. Fairfield is a place of opportunity. I know this, and you know this, but we have an obstacle. Some residents, visitors, and businesses outside of Fairfield don't know this. In the fall of last year, council approved an agreement with Chaven Concepts for the preparation of an economic development strategic plan. The preparation of roadmaps for the downtown and our business and industrial parks were identified as the top priorities. A primary recommendation identified in the roadmap by our consultant is the promotion of Fairfield as a place, the establishment of a unified voice that markets a brand and identity, not only for our downtown and business and industrial parks, but for the entire city. The three strategic roadmaps before you this evening provide tools and specific goals, strategies, and tactical actions to help accomplish this, to attract businesses, create jobs, and transform perceptions of the downtown and business and industrial parks, letting everyone know Fairfield is a place with opportunity. Council members remain committed to the downtown and our business and industrial parks. In 2007, council made a commitment to the Heart of Fairfield with the adoption of a specific plan. The downtown roadmap builds on the foundation of this plan with the proposal of new initiatives specific to the downtown core. The recent approval by council to prepare broadband action plans to modernize and build infrastructure furthers the commitment to support existing and new businesses in our business and industrial parks and helps resolve a challenge businesses identified in stakeholder interviews. Before I introduce this evening's presenter, I offer a brief overview. Tonight's presentation introduces three strategic roadmaps prepared by our consultant. Chaven's team of subject matter experts conducted over 70 stakeholder interviews with staff, local businesses, strategic partners, and real estate and development professionals. A total of 19 working documents were produced, serving as the supporting documentation to their final recommendations. The Heart of Fairfield Downtown roadmap focuses on the transformation of the downtown into a destination branded as Fairfield's Food and Arts District, building on the international restaurants that already exist. The Business and Industrial roadmap promotes our business and industrial parks as the North Bay's emerging business and industry hub, establishing, establishing us as a distinct location rather than merely a place between two neighboring regions. The Marketing and Business Attraction roadmap supports both these new identities. The plan helps move the city's economic development program forward to grow and protect our tax base, keep us relevant and competitive as markets change, help existing businesses succeed, and attract new businesses and private development to our city, bringing with them new investment and the creation of jobs leading to a faster recovery from the impacts of COVID-19. The adoption and implementation of the roadmaps provides substantial economic impact and benefit to the city. Dwayne Dolman, our division manager, will speak more on the city's return on investment after Chaven's presentation. Since 1989, Audrey Taylor has built Chaven Concepts to be one of the leading full-service economic development and marketing firms in the nation. Her company has assisted over 350 communities with the preparation of results-oriented roadmaps and strategic initiatives. Audrey is a Chico native. She is a recipient of several awards and honors, including Woman of the Year for California's Third State Assembly District twice in her career. Please join me in welcoming Audrey Taylor.
Thank you, Jorge. I appreciate that. And I'd like to thank the council, and good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, I'm Audrey Taylor, Chaven Concepts, and tonight I'm proud to present this roadmap that we put together for the City of Fairfield. And joining me tonight is Dr. Eiler and Mary Bosch, two of the team members on this, uh, strategic plan that we put together. As Jorge has already presented, uh, we have three roadmaps that we put together as we use what we call a place-based strategy to help work with transformation in these areas that you want economic activity to occur. We focused on three bold auction, uh, actions that lead to transformation. Number one, for the Heart of Fairfield is really focusing on creating a food and arts district in the industrial parks and in the business parks, really positioning Fairfield as North Bay's emerging business and industry hub. And third, to tell your story, get the story out to your external markets. The internal market, the people of Fairfield know your story very well, but external people and businesses that might make investment do not know it as well. You will see through the presentations and the executive summary and the roadmaps that you receive that there is detailed implementation plans that have been presented. Each of these roadmaps have three or four goals that we have set up, and then they have strategies and action plans that follow those, and each one of these builds upon one another, leverages assets you have and the existing work that's going on. So for the Heart of Fairfield, we have four goals, and they all start with transformation through place-making. And each of these goals have strategies, which I'm hoping you've been able to look through, so I just, I won't read them to you. But the key one here, and that bold action, is really focusing Fairfield as a, a food and arts district. To envision what this means, our team member, MC Design, has created concepts for you to think of how transportation, transformation identity can work, particularly as a food and arts district. So a logo was created that has several different applications, and the logo really focuses on food and arts district and the Heart of Fairfield. How the, the logo can be used and populated throughout the Heart of Fairfield to start branding it and creating that new identity that you're looking for. Ideas such as monument signs and sculptures, um, Fairfield is lucky to have these already existing pedestals, that we call them, that are just ready to be utilized for art. Uh, so we could utilize those and start making that transformation to create that food and arts district. You have 60 benches in downtown, and you did a very creative thing working with, um, the public schools when you did the linear part arch, by working with the schools to put tiles on these benches. So enlivening and engaging the community by decorating and beautifying these benches could be a great activity, particularly for engagement. Murals, I know you have discussed, and they always enlighten and bring art and color to a downtown. Uh, and using hearts as your basis could be a fun way to decorate some of those many empty walls that you have in the downtown. And promoting your local entrepreneurs and heroes, um, banner campaigns. So these are all concepts that we have delivered, uh, with ideas of how to honor your entrepreneurs that are downtown, to get them recognized by other residents in the City of Fairfield. And then using some of your local products as what we call teasers and gift packets that you can sell, and again, keep promoting the Heart of Fairfield. And for the Heart of Fairfield, you can think of this as a brochure, we call it a sales tool, creating something that's very unique in the marketplace, uh, when we call it the Heart of Fairfield, new cookbook, uh, just kind of, again, highlighting this transformation that you're making. There are a number of concepts, uh, in the report. These are just a few of those concepts. Number two is the Business and Industrial Park roadmap, which we also call the traded sector. This is very important to Fairfield, particularly as you come out of the pandemic and we're trying to do recovery. The traded sector jobs are really those that give you the biggest impact. They usually have the highest wages, and they have the most, the highest multiplier effect on the community. And again, there's four goals here, four strategies under each one of these, and many action plans. But the purpose here is really to, again, get the word out, work with those traded sector businesses, particularly your existing businesses. How do they build back up again? How do we outreach to them, help them through the challenges that they have so they can, you know, add back their capacity? And then take a look at new businesses and the launch of new businesses, so new prospecting to new markets. The marketing in here is about repositioning how we talk about Fairfield, that it is an emerging business and industry hub, you know, for the North Bay. Previously, I think when we talked to and did a survey of businesses and Previously, I think when we talked to and did a survey of businesses and things, they were kind of going like, you know, Fairfield, you know, it's that bridge, and we got to go across the bridge, particularly in the Bay Area. But now you're getting known more, and how do we let them know more about you? How do we position our competitive advantages to them? And how do they show them why they should be there? You'll remember in February, I believe, Dr. Eiler did a presentation to you regarding the forecasts for recovery on the pandemic, and we had three paths, one accelerated, one slower, and one medium. And again, this strategy specifically addresses an accelerated rate for return of the jobs that you've lost and rebuilding your economy after the pandemic. Our third roadmap, which is the Business and Marketing and Business Attraction, is again, really about branding and creating these new identities to external markets outside of the area. We have three goals, three strategies, and multiple actions through this process. A lot of this is around the communications and branding, talking to businesses that are outside of the area, talking to consumers that are outside of the area, that you want to visit, you know, downtown, and that you want businesses to come to the area. This also leverages existing marketing that's going on, so that you're leveraging your dollar when it comes to marketing. So if we do this, you know, what is the return? And that's always the question. So we've used a model to kind of estimate what your return would be. And with that model, we looked at the square footage that could be built, both in the business industrial parks and the vacant square footage in the downtown. So if we were to fill those, your estimated job creation would be sixteen hundred, almost seventeen hundred jobs directed in drop. That economic impact would be two hundred and twenty-eight million annually after they're created. The sales tax, which really comes from those businesses that would be downtown more than in the traded sector, would be around three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars, again, annually that comes directly to the city. And then there's always the local taxes, both for the city and for the county, which is estimated around four point nine million dollars. So I want to personally thank Jorge, the team, Dwayne, and particularly Bill Way and Whitney Skilman, and all the other staff who worked with us throughout this project to really look at your strengths and weaknesses, your opportunities and your threats, and then the strategic thinking that would along with this. We're very pleased with being able to deliver this to you, and on behalf of the team, I hope that you're happy with it, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor. Excellent presentation. Comments or questions, colleagues?
Yeah, I'll go, mayor.
Councilman Tonason, please.
Yeah, I am over the top happy. I love the presentation, I love what you guys are doing downtown. It's very exciting, and I'm very excited about this. That's all.
Oh, thank you.
Any other comments? Well, that was a wonderful presentation, and before we take formal action, let me just tell you, colleagues, that the farmer's market will open at 4:00 PM on Thursday afternoon. So we'll look forward to seeing you downtown if you're sort of. No other questions? I'll entertain a motion then to approve.
Make that motion, mayor.
A second.
If you have a second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Tonason, multiple seconds. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonason?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn now to item number twenty-one, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item twenty-one, Discussion and Direction of the City Council of the City of Fairfield Regarding Commemorative Flags. And our presenter will be our city manager, Stephen Chatwin.
Thanks, Karen. Mr. Mayor and City Council, earlier in our meeting today, the mayor, through Vice Mayor Vicaro, proclaimed the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer, LGBTQ. Boy, let me say this, LGBTQ. This is from an old Air Force guy, had a lot of acronyms, and I'm stumbling over this one. LGBTQ Pride Month. In conjunction with this proclamation, the city has been asked to fly the LGBTQ flag commemorating Pride Month in the city of Fairfield. The city's current flag policy, in our administrative manual, states that the United States of America flag will be properly respected and maintained at all times at any of our city facilities. When other flags are flown from the same pole, the US flag should always be at the peak. No flag may fly above or to the right of the US flag. Now, this policy is considered, is consistent with government code, which states that at all times, the national flag shall be placed in the position of first honor. Now, we do not have any kind of a law which prohibits the flying of what is called ceremonial flags at city facilities, so long as that flag is not flown higher than the US flag and the California flag. Because there's no mention of which ceremonial flags may be flown at city facilities, the staff is seeking the city council's direction and approval on flying the LGBTQ flag for the month of June. Now, in addition to this, staff is asking if the council would like us to prepare a resolution for a later council meeting, which would provide specific parameters for allowing non-US flags to be flown at city facilities. With that, I'll stand for questions and council action direction.
Councilman Vicaro, please, Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. City Manager. You know, I've been outspoken about this in the past, and I do think that, number one, I think we should fly the LGBTQ flag, because, in fact, I thought we should have in the past. But I think now it's time to join our colleagues in the other cities that have chosen to do this. But I also think that, yeah, we should have a new flag policy that we could come back to in a couple of months, but I would very much like to see the pride flag flown for the month of June in our city. So that's my opinion. I mean, I'm sure other people have other opinions, but when the time comes, I would like to make a motion to do that.
Thank you. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you. And this is more, I guess, to our city manager and city attorney. I have absolutely no objections to flying that flag. But what happens if next month, somebody else comes forward with a legitimate nonprofit or organization that we vehemently disagree with? What happens then if we have to start to pick and choose? And that's why the vice mayor said, bring it back, and you guys talk a couple of months, but I am concerned that with the way things are in society today, somebody would want to press the point. So can we say no without risk of being sued? Or, that's probably a dumb question, we get sued for everything, but when can we say no and, you know, let the chips fall?
I would defer to Greg on that, so.
Yes, for sure, my recommendation is that you would adopt a policy, and that's what other cities have done, and many cities do fly the pride flag now, and we also have seen that they have adopted policies, just avoid that problem. And it doesn't become like a permit system where, you know, we have to pick and choose. It really is identifying flags that the city would fly as part of its own mission and program. So the policy's important. I think you can go ahead tonight and approve the flying of the pride flag for this month, but our recommendation is to follow up with a policy for the long term.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Moy, please.
Well, I too embrace what my colleagues have said about totally supporting the LGBTQ community. I do that in many ways, starting back in the eighties when I worked with people with AIDS in San Francisco. I also am referring back to Jonathan Cook, our friend, and the letter that he sent. And I would like to see a policy before we actually fly the flag, because I want to avoid, I want to avoid bad actors coming in and, you know, demanding. Of course, our friends are not demanding this, they just, they would want this. And I don't want to disappoint anybody, but I think that we should have the policy in place first, so it protects all of us. And I know that our friends would understand that. Jonathan even said that they would bring the policy that his friends in another city had put together, and I'm sure our city attorney has looked at things like this too. But we should have done this over the last year. I'm disappointed in us, although in the last year, we've been in a pandemic. So I would just ask that we put that together first and move from there.
Any comments, colleagues? Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, mayor. I'm in favor of also raising the flag for the first time in Fairfield for all the reasons written in the resolution, but also because of, we always talk about how diverse Fairfield is, and I think this is one way to send in solidarity with a part of our community that, you know, at times, is still struggling with a lot of social justice issues. And so I think it is important to show our support for them. And I'm also in favor of, you know, writing a resolution for the future. I think that's the right way to go. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Mr. Mayor, if no one has any other comments, I'd like to make a motion that we fly the, oh, go ahead, sir.
Okay, Councilwoman Bertani, please.
I just want to say I appreciate Councilmember Moy's procedural point, and at the same time, I think that, you know, we can all agree that flying the pride flag represents the fabric of the United States of America, as reflected down in our little cities like Fairfield and Solano County. Because that flag is about inclusivity, it's about equality, it's about love, not hate, and it's about fairness for everybody, and that's what this country stands for. So, I mean, I think that, you know, I'm definitely going to vote to fly the pride flag right now. And I'm definitely going to push for a policy that prohibits hate from being disseminated in the city of Fairfield in any way, shape, or form. So as we talk policy moving forward, just know that, from my opinion, any organizations that promote discrimination, that promote, the things that we don't stand for in America, it's just, that's what the policy has to be. So Catherine, I appreciate your procedural point. I'm a very procedural person. You're right, we should have done this a long time ago. We should have done this a long time ago. But for God's sake, let's be unanimous tonight in support of flying the pride flag with no further delay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other quick comments? Mr. Vice Mayor, please, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'll go back to, thank you, Councilwoman Bertani, I appreciate that. And also, Councilwoman Moy, I also appreciate the procedural outlook on this, and I think that, you know, we will come up with a policy that works for everybody. But I think it's been so long that we have really not looked at a lot of our communities, and especially our LGBTQ community, which has been so supportive of everyone in Fairfield. And I know, speaking to Jonathan today also, that this is something that he would really appreciate, we stand behind, and we do fly that flag for the month of June. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the motion to fly the flag for the month of June.
It's been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonason?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Enthusiastic, yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council. We'll get to work on that policy immediately. And as soon as we get, Jonathan Cook has been tremendous, and he's offered, I think, a flag for the city, so as soon as we get that, we'll ensure that that is put up, hopefully tomorrow, first thing.
And we turn now to item number twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, just on the last item, Mr. City Manager, if you're going to raise a flag tomorrow, could you please just let us know in an email or something tonight so we can attend?
Yeah, I wasn't planning on a formal ceremony, just as we raised the flag normally, or have to change out a flag, was what we were planning on doing. We can certainly do a ceremony if you like, but we have not prepared anything for that.
I think that Jonathan has been at the other flag raisings, I'm sure he would like to be at this one and invite others. I'm not saying we need a ceremony, but just a heads up for us, so if you want to get a bit.
I'll reach out to Jonathan first thing in the morning and talk with him, and then we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We turn now to item number twenty-two.
Continued discussion to consider and take action to, one, award preliminary approval to operate a commercial cannabis retail business in the city to selected finalists; two, direct staff to prepare a resolution for adoption that authorizes the city manager to issue a commercial cannabis retail permit to operate a commercial cannabis retail business in the city to each of the selected finalists in accordance with the requirements and procedures for operation in Fairfield Municipal Code, Chapter 10E, and any conditions of approval; and, three, provide direction to staff in identifying any additional conditions of approval, such as community benefits, to be included with the resolution authorizing the issuance of a commercial cannabis retail permit. And our presenter is our city attorney, Greg Stapanasich.
Mayor, members of the council, I first, and I would get a little more background on where we are this evening and where we are in the process procedurally, and then I'll make some recommendations at the very end as to two possible steps that you can take, and with my own recommendation. But first of all, the background. Number one, with regards to the mayor's participation in the meeting tonight, he abstained from the last discussion of public hearing on May fourth, because he had rental property that was located actually more than five hundred feet, but less than a thousand feet from Embark. And for that reason, since we're considering all the applications together, my advice was that the mayor should abstain in that particular case. Well, the council already has directed that a resolution of approval be prepared, and you'll act upon that on the fifteenth of this month for Embark and also for JJVI. So since Embark now will be considered separately on the fifteenth, and tonight you're looking at three finalists, which is the showcase, CCC Associates and Authentic, I advise the mayor that he can participate and preside over the meeting this evening, there's no conflict at this point in time. So that is the first issue I wanted to address. In terms of the process right now, it's a little unusual, and that's why I want to walk everyone through it, we have what's called a limited public hearing this evening. So the full public hearing already was closed on May fourth, at which time we had heard from the general public. And, but at the May fourth meeting, Councilmember Moy had raised certain concerns about the showcase application, and it was based on, at least a part on, evidence that was not yet in the record. And that was a legal concern that we had to address. And the way of doing that, as I explained to you at the last meeting, was we would have an opportunity for Councilmember Moy to submit this information, evidence into the record, and then the applicant, the showcase, have the opportunity to both respond in writing and also to respond during a public hearing. So also, with respect to the public hearing, this does not open up testimony to everybody to talk about everything. We're only talking about the additional information that Councilmember Moy has submitted to the city, and that's been placed on the city's website, and is contained within your packet and writing, and has also been provided to the showcase for their review and comment. So if anyone else this evening, if the hearing is opened and conducted this evening, anyone that wants to speak on this, they are allowed to, but again, it has to be limited only to this new information that's been presented. They cannot present additional evidence or information at tonight's meeting. At this point in time, the showcase has responded in writing to the issues raised by Councilmember Moy and the information that she has presented, and so that already has been done, it's included in your packet and both in writing, or it's made a part of the record, both in writing, and also, again, was placed on. or has put, made a part of the record, both in writing and also again was placed on the city's, uh, website. And, uh, as I mentioned, I also would be, have a chance to respond to it orally this evening. Uh, in the last week, as you know, council members and, and myself have received information, uh, from unknown parties. They did not identify who they were associated with. And they presented information and allegations concerning two of the finalists, which would be, uh, the showcase and the authentic. Uh, as I advised you, you should, uh, uh, after this was received, that you should not consider this, uh, information at this time. That my office was going to investigate the, um, points made and the allegations made were that the applications by these two parties were, were incomplete and, or inaccurate. And so that's what we're in the process of doing. And we have, I've been working with, um, David Lim of my office and reviewing these. And we're, I was hoping that it all would be wrapped up, uh, by tonight, uh, and we could have a report to you on it. It's, it's not. There is still additional review that we need, uh, to do to complete our review. It's important. I do not want to allow there to be, uh, information discussed publicly that's inaccurate. Uh, it's not well-founded. And for that reason, it's important that we can complete our investigation of this. And then we would give our report to the, to the, uh, council. Um, so where do we stand then right now, since, uh, my office is still involved in our investigation of this information? I want to once, I really want to emphasize two big points. Uh, I personally am not happy with the fact that we got this information, uh, after the hearing was closed. And, uh, it surely does appear that, uh, it's been submitted by just front of the applicants because in fact I've been trying to track down who's behind, uh, these comments and that's been difficult, uh, to do. And just want to say this really is not the way we do business in Fairfield. It's not fair to all of you to really get information in this way after the fact and, and, uh, not knowing for sure who it is. At the same time, there's information there. I really do feel that I, I felt an obligation to you to review it because there could be information in there that if it's true, uh, it would be important for you to consider in making your final decision. I wouldn't want any surprises to occur, uh, after the fact here. So, but that's the reason for our, our current, uh, evaluation here and our desire to make a report to you. So we have really two options here that the council has. And I'll, I'll tell you what my recommendation is first at this point in time. Is that my recommendation is that we would continue this until we can complete, uh, my office's review and we would give you a RIC report. And to the extent anything needs to be made public, uh, we would of course do that. If there was, if there was, our conclusion, this was irrelevant information, uh, you know, that we wouldn't go any further than that, other than to report to you that fact. But to the extent it was something that you should all consider, then we are going to have to, uh, allow an opportunity again for that to be heard and for the affected parties to be able to testify with respect to that additional information. I also want to make a really kind of a warning here that this is it. We can't keep receiving stuff like this. And, and, um, there's been more enough time for information to be given to all of you. And, uh, anything else wants to, anyone wants to submit something else now down the road like this, uh, we're not going to consider it. Uh, so I think that's a very important point to, to make right now. And so under this approach, which might is my recommendation, uh, we, we have talked about whether or not to continue for two weeks. But on two weeks, you're going to be considering the resolutions and conditions for, uh, JJVI and also for Embark. And those conditions are very important. And I really think it's important at that point in time on the 15th, the council really focus on the conditions of approval. This is a new thing we're doing. And we, I think staff has done a great job putting the conditions together, but we make sure you're all happy and we're really covering all of our bases. So for that reason, the council, I talked about having a special meeting on the 22nd of the month. And so with the continuance, I would recommend that we go to the 22nd just so we can consider then every, the last three applicants or finalists separately. And also we'd have a chance to, uh, complete our investigation, talk first privately with the two affected parties to go over it, make sure everything we're talking about here is, is, uh, well-founded. And, um, and then we'd have to just notice the fact that we would be having this, uh, meeting on the 22nd to consider this additional information. At that point in time, you can act on the final three. Now, the question is, I'm sure you're going to ask me, well, could we also still go forward tonight with, uh, the hearing? And legally you could, uh, but it's with one really important proviso. And that is that if you conduct the limited hearing tonight, you can only consider the evidence that's in the record right now, which is information submitted by Councilmember Moy. And, uh, and any testimony in respect to that that is heard. I would not want you to be considering or talking about this information you have received, um, separately and privately, and I have received, uh, because again, we don't, we should not talk about that into, into the record at all until we know what it's all about. And so under that scenario, if that was the approach the council took, uh, again, your decision night would be preliminary. And again, before any final decision, we would have to have, uh, this issue resolved and that information presented to you, um, as to what our findings were and, uh, whether or not there's something more for you to consider at that time. So again, those are the two approaches I think that legally you can do. Um, the first one is my recommendation to you, uh, on the continuance.
Discussion colleagues, yeah. Councilman Tim, please, and Councilman Moy and Councilman Tonison, please.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor, and Greg, thank you, sir. Uh, I'm really concerned that even though you say going forward, if you send us something and, and I don't know if you're going to be able to see this, but, you know, last week's, this week's.
I got it.
Uh, it's all, it's all the same person, the same handwriting. Uh, and some are thick, some are thin, and then of course the emails. But what is to keep somebody winning this by war of attrition? Because they come up with new information and even though you say you won't, uh, you, you won't consider it or we won't consider it. And, and let me ask you this. I, I'm ready to proceed. Showcase is ready to go. It's been almost a month since the allegations came up and everybody's ready to go. As far as the other two are, let's say we go tonight, but then you do find something that comes out of the city attorney's office. We can, or even if we put it off, but somebody gave you legitimate information or two months from now and they already have a license. Uh, I would assume that in our, in our conditions going forward, that we can revoke the license. Uh, I see, I see the, the city attorney or the city manager kind of going up. But what if something comes up? Because now we're a month, the business people are ready to go. Now we're going to be another month. It's, I don't know if we're being careful to a fault or if somebody is playing us because they know we're going to be careful. But we're already on showcase because all that information is in. And then the other two, if you find something, you can tell us, hey, I found it. Such and such information is correct and it automatically disqualifies them in another three weeks.
So, yes. Uh, yes. So I'll have to tell you, if, uh, if this was a final decision tonight, I would tell you, you have to continue it. You have no choice. The reason is this. It is true, you can revoke. Uh, but legally it is harder to revoke a permit than to decide to grant or deny a permit. And because in fact, the whole standard of legal review is totally different. Once a permit is granted, a court's going to be somewhat deferential to that permit holder. And we really have to make the case why it should be revoked. I don't want to see us in that spot. But where we are tonight, you have your, just like it was with Embark and JJVI. You're not compelled to, in fact, when it comes back on the 15th, you can change your mind on those two because you have not yet made a final decision. So that's why on, in this one, if, uh, again, you decide to go forward tonight, I, I would not stop our review and city attorney's office will continue to do it. And we report back to you, uh, at the, um, uh, on the, uh, 22nd, uh, or be, and be before the 22nd on the conclusion of a review. At that point in time, you have a complete discretion to say no to any one of the two that you would possibly pick tonight. And you could say no and there would be no legal recourse that they could have against you at that point because we would present it to them, they could respond to it and you would make your decision. So that is a possible, that's why I say that is a possible, of course.
Greg, can I, Greg, can I get some, uh, clarification there then? If in the future, after the public hearing, the council determines not to go forward with one of those permits, uh, can they make that decision based on your investigation and new information? Or, you know, is that kind of a touchy subject? I, I, I think it's important that the council understand how that works as they make whatever decision they're going to make tonight.
Yes. So, yeah, this is, and this is the reason why, was I could, uh, we, we need, we would need a three-week separation here because we need to finish our review and then the parties, if there's anything to it. And, and again, it may not be conclusive, but it's just something you should know about, uh, in making your decision. Then, uh, we need to open, reopen the hearing on that new information, just like we did for tonight. And, uh, they, they're, and the council then would, would, and again, hold a limited public hearing on that new information. So that's how that would have to be handled.
So it's my understanding then we can actually do both, protect the city, move this forward. If something comes up out of the city attorney's office where you say, counsel, you need to take a look at this, then in three weeks we can look and say, yep, everything was good until you either confirmed or denied.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing I will say, just for the staff burden here, is that if you give the go-ahead tonight to, to two of the three, staff is going to have to prepare, uh, start preparing the resolution for your consideration on, on the 22nd. So there is, you know, a lot of work involved in preparing the resolutions. That's the only thing I would add. You would, again, you would have the ability to say no, uh, on the 22nd, but we would have put in more staff time in preparing the resolutions.
But I, and, and, and Rick, I see, and I understand that about staff's time. But what I'm looking at now is, uh, you can't play us for fools. Sometimes we do it ourselves. But this has gone on and on and enough is enough. And if two got through tonight, one got through tonight, or none got through tonight, I think if we found out the truth or what we believe to be the truth and you tell them, hey, you're going to move forward, but the resolution coming out of the staff might be delayed because, because of, we're not going to put the burden on you. Uh, I, I think then that would be fair to actually everybody.
Okay, yeah, I, I see. I'm, as, that's a good point. We could delay. If you take the second option, we could delay preparing the resolution until this came back to you for, uh, your, your final, uh, uh, consideration of the situation if we found something that we felt you needed to take, to consider.
Okay, because like I said, I, I would encourage my, my colleagues, we're ready to go tonight, at least for, uh, showcase and then, uh, Triple C.
It would be for all, you can consider all three tonight on a preliminary basis. Yeah, if you want to, sure.
All right, all right. Well, that'd be my recommendation and thank you so very much.
And the speaking order now is Councilwoman Moy, Councilmember Tonison, and then Councilwoman Bertani and the Vice Mayor. Okay?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, the chart, the things that came to us, I didn't get the, the first package that came anonymously. I got the second one, I guess it's the second one on Saturday that had information. And, um, and then we had this email and, um, and so you've got, two of the folks in front of us have very serious allegations against them. Um, I don't think it's prudent to move ahead today. We have to count staff time, staff work, and, believe me, you, there will be legal challenges if we decide to do something tonight, maybe not even, um, not even based on what we do tonight. But these are serious allegations. Uh, I mean, I'm, uh, I'm shocked at them. I'm, I'm shocked and, and angry. We got more today. We got more information today um, from another one of them in front of us today. What are we supposed to do with that? Not think about it, I guess. Um, I am not comfortable going forward tonight to try to decide on these things and then turn around in two weeks or three weeks or whatever. Maybe, uh, probably likely have to reopen, as far as I can see, reopen it again. Um, that's what I'm seeing. Uh, it makes zero sense to me to step in this, um, at all. And, you know, uh, showcase, they have their, you know, um, their, uh, things in the road, but they don't have an answer, I don't think, yet, um, for the other stuff that came out. And our city attorney hasn't even finished investigating. He's investigating very serious charges. You know, these things have to do with court. They have to do with alleged. You know, big trouble.
Yeah, Councilwoman Moy, I went to talk about the details of that.
Yes, I, I know. I'm just saying, it could be big trouble. And I'm just saying, let's keep us out of it. Let the city attorney finish, complete, complete, please colleagues, let him complete his investigation. We trust him. Let him get it done. Um, I thought frankly, that backgrounds and all this were supposed to be done a long time ago and we should never had any of this in front of us. But it wasn't done. You guys know that, right? There was nothing done. And so here we are, um, and, uh, it's, um, it's bothersome. The, the whole thing is, um, I'm very upset about that I have to go do work, um, on my time. And I did a lot more and I didn't, and we're not ever going to discuss that because I don't want to open a whole nother bag of worms. But I'll tell you, there's a lot out there that should have been caught by HGL, whoever was, you know, looking at these things. Um, but right now, the city attorney has, he needs his time. The first thing that he asked for is for us to delay. And so that's what I believe we should do. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Tonison, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm, uh, I'm in support of moving through with this, uh, support what Chuck says. Uh, we're not issuing permits tonight. We're just, we're just pushing through the, what I think should have been pushed through two weeks ago or a month ago, however long ago it was. But I'm ready to move forward on this and move the, move the others through. And if we vote on, um, CCC and Authentic tonight, I'm, I'm good with that too. And let's, let's get moving on this. And then, uh, city attorney, if something comes up, the, the permits, they can be, if, if they're not issued, then, and something comes up, they're not, we're not going to issue them. So, uh, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Bertani, please, and then the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm concerned about this process. You know, due process is just that. It's a process. It's a process and it has timelines and it has deadlines. And I think, and I'm probably the only one that thinks this, but this investigation into this specious evidence that we received, you know, uh, and expending hours of time with Greg and his firm and the staff on this. In a court of law, this is inadmissible because closing arguments are done. I mean, you, you can't, you can't go run back to court two weeks later after closing arguments and say, oh, guess what? We discovered this and it shows up in the judge's mailbox with no return address? Are you kidding me? No. And it sends the wrong message to me from the city council. Because what's to, if we consider this specious evidence now that we received in our mailboxes, what's to prevent somebody from sending some more stuff next week and the week after? Oh, but then what are we, what are we going to say? Oh, so we considered that week's specious evidence, but not this week's specious evidence? It puts us in a position of exposure. Because we're now committing ourselves to consider evidence that is after closing arguments on these issues. Now with showcase, we're ready to go for that tonight. I agree with that 100%. But in terms of the documents that we received and this continuing investigation about allegations that are coming up way after the fact, I'm 100% not in support of that. I think we should shut it down. Shut it down. We're not going to, we're not, we're not going to investigate that. And we're not going to investigate anything else that you send our way. You know why? Because it's too late. We gave a due process procedure. We were fair. We reopened. We considered everything. But enough of anything is enough. And so in my opinion, I think that we're increasing our legal exposure by continuing to investigate this evidence and make it of record when it's coming in too late. It's over. You, they had their opportunity to present this stuff and they didn't. And, and by the way, you know, just by the way, the way it was submitted just escalates my opinion in this regard. It wasn't done right. It wasn't somebody stepping forward in public, on the record, on a mic, saying, please consider this because blah, blah, blah. You're sending stuff to my house? Uh, yeah, no, no. So in my, in my opinion, that evidence is inadmissible. We have solid grounds for that. And we open ourselves up to a Pandora's box of exposure if we continue investigating evidence that's submitted after the fact. So, you know, I, I mean, Catherine, I mean, that's, that's the procedural Pam showing back up. You know, and, and the bit as a lawyer tells me, Greg, if you, if we receive something to, tomorrow, do you have to investigate that too?
Well, this is, this is the deal. I think that what was. I think that what was given to us was something that, if it was true, would be something that would have been relevant for your consideration.
But, but can I, but can I stop you right there? Exactly, but you're an attorney, and I'm an attorney. And here's the thing, if you receive evidence after the closing argument, period, it, I mean, it happens all the time, right? There's got to be a procedure that we follow for that, that needs to be documented, and right now, we don't have one. In a court of law, that's called a motion for reconsideration, based on new evidence that has come in the record, that's relevant, blah, 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 you know all the legal standards for that. We don't have that procedure in place now, and, and I feel like we, we're being, because we are so fair, because we are so contemplative about this, we're being taken advantage of, and I don't like it. I don't like people sending information to my home where I live, that, that is unidentified, not of record, no one knows who the sender is, so, so I'll stop, but I'm, I'm just going to put in, I'm going to put in my opinion that the evidence right now that we received at our homes is too late, it is not of the record, and it should no longer be considered, and you and this city should not expend any further resources researching and investigating that information.
And if I could, uh, uh, give some additional information to the really important issues that Counselmember Bertone has raised, in terms of this just getting dragged out, and Counselmember Tim made the same point. The, I think the council could make a, a direction to me, and to, and as, as a rule for these proceedings, that this is done for, and, uh, that, uh, we cannot, we will not receive any more going forward. But also, if you wanted to say, look, the hearing was closed, and we did decide at the night the hearing was closed, we would consider this additional information that was raised by Counselmember Moy, but we're not going to consider anything that came in after that, uh, after that direction for reopening or rehearing, you can make that choice. So, this is just one thing to share with you. My concern is, one, is for yourselves, in terms of making a very important decision here, if there was something that was alleged that was significant, I wanted to make sure that you wouldn't be exposed, just to criticism afterwards, that here you made a very important decision, and yet here's this terrible thing had happened, and someone's able to show that in fact it did happen. So that was been my concern only, is to protect that part of it. But I think that, again, uh, the points you make, Counselmember Bertone, about how a court works is absolutely true, and you as a, as a quasi judicial body here also can, can establish clear rules, and, uh, and again, legally, you can, that is, that is a choice you can make in terms of just cutting things off at this point in time, and, uh, not considering this additional information, but that's an informed decision that I really have to defer to all of you to make, is that, is that how you want to now finish up the proceedings?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to say, um, I do, uh, can I finish, Catherine?
I still have an opportunity, go ahead.
I haven't started yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, first of all, I do respect everybody's opinion on this council, and everybody knows that. I was, I probably, you know, went into tonight thinking, you know, let's just get it over with. You know, I pretty much, you know, had it, because we have so much more important business to deal with in this city, okay? But, um, from hearing from Greg, and, I mean, these are like serious, serious allegations here, not just like trivial allegations, these are serious allegations. And if we don't allow Greg to at least, like, research some of these, I mean, it's, to me, then we're doing ourselves a disservice. I am glad, though, that, Greg, you did state that JJVI and Embarc on the 15th would go forward, because those two should not be involved in any of this, because they were, that was a unanimous vote, a 6-0 council vote. So that has to be made clear, and that was made clear by you, Greg, so I appreciate that. Um, I'm going to, you know, obviously, I'm going to defer to the majority of the council, and I appreciate what everybody's saying, um, Chuck, and Pam, and Scott, everybody, Catherine, you know, I mean, I, but I do believe that we should, I think we should allow Greg to look at some of these allegations, just because, you know, I saw them, I read them, just like everybody else, um, and there's some pretty serious stuff here, some court cases and some other things. So I, I feel, that's my opinion, you know, um, but, you know, I'm going to defer to the, the majority, and if people want to move forward. My concern is, what's going to happen if we come back in two weeks, and we move somebody forward, Greg, you find something out in two weeks, we come back, and it's like, what? Okay, what do we do now? And that's, you know, that, with these serious allegations. So I, I think that we have to be very careful moving forward, um, but trust me, I want this to be over as much as anyone, because I've, I've about had it with all the lobbying and everything else that's been going on, and, um, you know, the insincerities, I mean, it's, it's really kind of driving me crazy, because, you know, especially when you know that people really don't mean what they say when they're talking to you, and that bothers me. So I, I think that, um, I think we should allow Greg to look at it, I'm okay with coming back on the 22nd for a one item agenda, and that's what this would be, and just end it right there. But I'm going to defer to the majority of the council, but that's my opinion.
Counselwoman Moy, your last opportunity, please. You're muted, Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here is, I, of course, agree with the Vice Mayor, and that these are serious allegations, as I said earlier, and it does concern me. Um, I want this over as much as anybody and everybody else. But here's my problem, and I bring it back to the beginning of all this, where has been the due diligence? Where are the backgrounds, at least on the people who came out on top? I feel like we've been left out here with really very little direction. I asked several times in emails, and in phone calls, was their background done? The answer was yes, yes. Then I started asking what kind of background, because I'm finding things. It, it wasn't, you know, the, I saw checks, they're in, um, all of this, these public documents, written out to HDL separately. Apparently, they were supposed to do background checks, but they weren't done, or if they were, somebody needs to tell me now, because this was all just not done. And, uh, we fired them, of course, uh, for good reason. I started a whole month before we fired them, telling the city attorney, and telling the city manager in emails that we needed to fire them then, because I'd found stuff with them. I look, I do this because our citizens expect it, of me and of us, to do due diligence. I understand that this is, taken too long. I want to get it right for all of us. And this has nothing to do with anything personal, I, I want everybody to know that this has everything to do, everything to do with what's right for our city, and that's what we all believe, and that's what we all have run on, and that's what we've all done day to day. So I'm asking us to do, again, what Greg had said, I don't want us to step in this, I understand, and with all of you, I was so unhappy with people sending us things, um, to our personal homes, um, and what shocked me most was that it went to our city attorney's personal home. We're elected officials, this stuff happens sometimes, I get mail from people sometimes. I put my name and my voice on everything that I do for this city. You know when I mess up? And you know when I do something right, even if some of us don't want to admit it. But the bottom line is here, and I'm going to take Greg of what he said, and I'm asking, again, my colleagues to do that, I just don't want, I just don't want this to happen to us, I, I don't. And it's not that we can't take the heat, we take heat every day, and I'm tired of the lobbying, too. Um, I'm tired of the information that came in today by email, by one of them that we're going to be talking about tonight. And, and that will continue to happen, of course it will, but we're, we're strong enough, just like juries are, to set that aside, if we have to. But because our city attorney found that these things were serious enough to investigate, I think we should be serious enough to allow him. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. You can, Counselwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand everyone's frustrations, um, this is not what we were expecting to be, uh, and, but I do agree with moving forward, I think with the information we got, it's already been answered, too. I'm okay with moving forward, along, as long, as, as, as well as some of my other colleagues. With regards to the new information, I think I just questioned, why wasn't it brought up before, like it's been asked, you know, and I understand, there's a question about the background being, you know, being incomplete, but if that information, you know, obviously, it's, 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 it's serious, but, so if it was that serious, why wasn't it brought up beforehand, and not in this secretive fashion where we're getting it at our home? I just think it's time to move forward. Thank you.
And you can well imagine what it's been like for me. I did not want to recuse myself, I wanted to participate the whole thing, but the right thing to do is to follow Mr. City Attorney's advice, and I abstained. But I'm ready to move forward now, and I think bringing it back on the 22nd is a prudent thing to do, it may not satisfy everybody, but it's, I think it's the best opportunity to restore our integrity as a council.
Mayor, I, I have a question. When you say bring it back on, move forward, but bring it back on the 22nd?
22nd, yes.
Does that mean?
No, I, take action tonight, but also keep the 22nd in mind.
Okay, good.
Yes, because that would be, uh, your decision tonight, if you decide to go forward, is only preliminary tonight, so it's not the final decision, so, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Chuck.
Okay, okay, good, I wasn't clear. Thank you, sir.
Okay, good. Any other final comments?
So, at this point, um, as I count the opinions here, it looks like four are in favor of going forward this evening to consider, everything's in your packet tonight, you won't consider anything else outside the record, you will listen to, uh, the Showcase and their presentation, if anyone else wants to testify, uh, they can, but only on the information in the packet, in the record only, and no other testimony will be received, I'll have to monitor that. And then, at the end of that, we'll close the limited hearing, and then at that point in time, you'll deliberate, and you'll decide whether or not to give preliminary approval to, up to two more, and then you have three before you, so it'll be two out of the three. You don't have to decide on anybody, and you can decide up to two tonight, it's preliminary, and it'll have to come back to you for a resolution before it's final, and then I would complete my review of, as I mentioned, I would do in the meantime, and I would also, um, and we can do this at the very end of the hearing, I just want a direction from the council, that, uh, there is no consideration given of anything else received after this evening, uh, so, again, slam the door on any more of these things coming in, uh, and I think we treat this like a court hearing, that, uh, this is final with respect to any new evidence being submitted. I would like you to vote on that at the very end, just as a procedural matter.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, so if that's, sounds good, everybody, or if any clarifications or questions?
And, 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 Counselmember Bertone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question is, how is that fair to other applicants? How is that fair to other applicants who may have discovered information, but said, oops, I missed the deadline, so I can't now submit what I think is material evidence to the city council's determination? It's not fair. I mean, these people are submitting additional collateral evidence after the fact, because they're not playing by the rules. But other people who may have had relevant information, who missed the deadline, may not have submitted the evidence, because they missed the deadline. So I, I don't see how we're being fair in this process, I really don't like this, it's a mess. And it's going to be more of a mess, the more we consider information that we have received speciously, um, and collaterally, that's not based on a solid due process, process. This is, so what we're doing now, this is not due process, because there, there may be other applicants who had information that didn't submit it, because they missed the deadline, but these people get to push their way in the door, and push their way into your mailbox, and push their way into my email, and get their evidence considered. I don't like it at all. So, that's all I have to say on that.
Mr. Mayor, just, just quickly, and it may be that it's the council's direction, based on what, um, our, our city attorney stated, that they, you, you may collectively, uh, instruct, uh, the city attorney to, we're done investigating it, uh, is that correct, Greg? So, uh, to, to Counselmember Bertone's point, uh, as you go through this process here tonight, your direction may be, um, um, in line with what Counselmember Bertone is suggesting, that, hey, don't even consider that other evidence, uh, or that other information, that is to say, that has come up, uh, it's, once you've made your decision, no more investigation beyond that. Is that, is that accurate, Counselmember Bertone?
Yes, I think we should do, I would suggest we do the following here, just so we have a clear path going forward after tonight. My suggestion would be that, um, you may want to now just go forward, as I mentioned right now, and then at the very end of the, of your deliberations tonight, give final instructions to me, and they could be one of two things, and one would be that, um, I would finish up this investigation right now, report back to you, the other one would be, no, that that's not going to be, this done, we're not going to consider this. And I, I did feel, I'll just explain why I, I did what I did here, is I've done this for many, many years, and this has been very unusual. But in administrative proceedings like this before cities, which is a little different than with the court, uh, it's not unusual after, I say, a land use decision, that, and before the decision is final, that some information comes forward that no one knew about, and, uh, it is possible for a city to properly reopen the hearing to consider that, and, and, and that has, I've been through that process before, uh, and that has happened without legal attack. And so, in that respect, it's a little bit different than we, what we see with very strict rules before in court of law. But again, I felt that it was important, with this information that came in, that I had really your direction as to ultimately what to do with it, because I did not want you to be blindsided down the road, if there was something there that really should have been thought of and considered by you. But it's really your choice, and at the end of the day, if you feel that you want to, you want to be, follow strictly, that the hearing was closed on the 4th, except for a very limited purpose, with the information from Counselmember Moy, and that's the end of it, uh, you can make that direction to me, and I will follow it. Uh, if you want me to continue with the investigation on a limited basis, and again, I'd recommend we would do it on a limited basis, then I'll take that direction from you. I really need for you to do that at the very end of the day, it's, it's your decision as to how we should finish this up.
Counselwoman Tim, please.
And this is for Greg. Greg, when we first started getting this, the emails and the surreptitious mailings, you instructed us that the public hearing was closed, that we were to make our decision only what was produced in the public hearing, and the only reason we're reopening this tonight is from Counselwoman Moy's allegations, so now we're going to go through that. But I followed your instructions, the things they sent me, I disregarded, and, and I agree with what the Vice Mayor said, though, is I wouldn't tell you, no, don't stop looking into this, because we still have three weeks, because if you do come up with something that nobody else found, um, then we can just say, well, you know, we found this, and we can take a vote, but, but I followed your instructions, and public hearings are public hearings, and, and to what Pam Bertone has to say is, you don't keep getting redos, you know, you can't run back to the court, so, yeah, I, I, I plan on tonight, listening to what Counselwoman Moy has to say, or I know what she said, what Showcase has to say, and then move forward with what was presented at the public hearing almost four weeks ago, and, and that's a correct interpretation of what you told us, correct?
Yeah, so that's what we will do now, and, uh, I guess I will monitor the testimony this evening, to keep it online with what the ground rules are for this evening, and then we'll finish up, and you'll be allowed to give your direction as to what you want to do at that point, and I do want final directions from you before we finish up tonight as to what, what happens next. So that would be, I think, the way to go. But I think now, you know, we have everyone ready to roll here, and, and open up our limited hearing, I recommend we go to that, and, um, and then we, you can have- And, um, and then we, uh, you can have a chance then to hear that and then make, make a choice.
That's exactly what we'll do.
Mayor, the, our, my report is finished. I've spoken enough here. What we'll do now is we will, uh, I would recommend now that you open the limited public hearing. Uh, the showcase gets a chance to speak first. Uh, I would give them more time than the limited time that normally we, we do because there was a lot of information in the packet. Uh, I would suggest maybe they'd be given 10 minutes to, to make their, um, presentation. That's up to you, uh, the council to make that choice on that, but that seems to me would be probably appropriate here.
That's exactly what we'll do.
Mr. Mayor, um, prior to that, uh, and Mr. City Attorney, maybe you can tell me, um, I, uh, feel like I need to respond to the things that they wrote and the libelous emails that they sent. Um, and, uh, I'm prepared to do that. Um, I don't know if you prefer that I wait until they're done, but, um, I'm not going to stand by and let them make a mockery of, uh, what, um, what was found. And, um, yeah, so I want to know what you, what, how should we approach this?
Well, I think that, uh, you know, in the normal course, we would allow the, um, persons testifying to testify. The council can then, you know, respond to the, uh, information. My only concern here, though, is again, want to be careful, there's no, uh, no, no new evidence given by yourself, uh, after the hearing has been.
Greg, I think we figure that out by now, all right?
But I think, I want to be careful.
I've talked about this clearly. Um, and, uh, so, again, I wouldn't have been forced to do any of this if there'd been due diligence done by staff, okay? So, um, I, I'll wait and we'll listen to, uh, to, you know, to Showcase, Mr. Sharp, and whoever else is going to talk.
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to say, uh, you know, about staff work on this is that we, we hired an expert because of the need to have someone who's done this, and they did it all over the state. And unfortunately, I mean, frankly, we know what the outcome was in terms of the dil- the diligence that was done. There was review done of the applicants. But again, we weren't happy with ultimate work product here, and, uh, that was unfortunate, but I mean, that's where we are right now uh, in this, in this, in this process. But again, I think that, um, there was a need in this case to bring in an expert to talk, uh, to, to advise us, rather. And, um, the, uh, and at the end of the day, we were disappointed by the level of work that was done, and the council took corrective actions. So I think at this point in time, um, you know, we have the evidence in our, in the, in the record now, and it's up to you to make your, your decision later this evening, so. All right, I think Mr. Sharp is ready to testify, Mayor.
Yes, so. Re-open, go ahead, Ben. You're on, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members. Uh, I only need about three, maybe four minutes. I, I do have a prepared statement. You've seen our application, our presentation, and my emails with the high points of our proposal. I do believe we've proven the value we bring to Fairfield with this project and the experience that makes us one of the top-rated companies in our industry. We are committed to being solid community partners, and we work hard to win on merit. You've also had a chance to review my email regarding the baseless last-minute accusations made against us by Ms. Moy nearly a month ago. Using easily accessible public records, we've shown that her accusations, new and old, are simply not true. For many of the accusations, she offered nothing. Now that we all know the truth, I hope tonight we're able to earn your support to proceed. In a few moments, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. First, I'd like to direct these words to Ms. Moy, because she has made it personal. You have known me since I was four years old. You and I have a shared misery that no person should ever have to experience. You have my home number, cell number, email address, Amy's number. You could have picked up the phone if you had genuine concerns. You said you met or talked with other applicants. Either your research was poor, or you were fed bad information and repeated it. I don't know what caused you to do what you've done, perhaps only you will know. Whatever the case, you have slandered me. You have slandered Ivan, a veteran who has been part of this community for five decades. You have slandered three men you've never met. Victor Nguyen, Brian Wong, and Gus Marad are good people. They are respected businessmen who've overcome life obstacles that you and I could never dream of. You accused us of stealing from you. You accused us of fraud. You alleged an arrest two or three years ago. You made up public meetings that did not happen. You said the process was flawed, but then you proceeded to accuse us of cheating while voting for another applicant who took the same very appropriate action that we did. For 20 days following that last hearing, you offered nothing in support of your accusations, and you manufactured new ones. You failed to show any research on other applicants, and you targeted us. You misled your fellow council members waving around documents that evening that you said supported your claims. Such documents simply did not exist, and whether you knew it at the time or not, you can no longer deny it. You accused us of not being local. I was raised and shaped by this community, and you know that better than almost anyone. I grew up in the Methodist church, went to Falls, to Susan Valley, to David Weir, to Green Valley in Armio, where I graduated as student body president in the class of 90. I worked at Salon Mall. I marched in the Independence Day parade. For a semester, I was even the student rep to the school board at the very dais where you usually sit. When I was done with college, I came back here. I worked for the senator and congressman who represented Fairfield for a decade, and I have volunteered in this community my entire life. You have been caught in a lie, and your lie has impacted the lives of real people. You failed to do your job. You have violated the public trust. You owe me, Ivan, Victor, Brian, and Gus, your fellow council members in this community, an apology, and I would appreciate it if you would accept responsibility for it. And Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want, want to speak on this item?
And again, it would be limited strictly to the new information that's in the packet, and that is, it's. If there's no one else, um, that is, uh.
There's no public speakers.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So at this point, Greg, if there's no more public speeches, they close the public hearing and now it's council deliberation?
Uh, yes, if there's no, if there's no more speakers, then we close the hearing and then it's council deliberations.
No more speakers, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for council discussion and action. Councilmember Moy.
Mr. Mayor, um, I am going to respond to Mr. Sharp. Um, he made some, I'm going to talk about libel and lie. Uh, we heard a lot of that tonight. Um, I prepared something to show that, in fact, I did tell you guys the truth. Um, and it's all in the public record, and I'm going to direct you to where it is. So here we go. I will begin my remarks by saying how disturbing this process has been. It is sad, all of it. In fact, uh, Dan Sharp and I have been friends. Um, his wife and I are friends, and this is nothing personal at all. Um, in any way, I've said it and I'll say it again. And I, 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 I'm shocked kind of by, uh, his allegations tonight. Though I was assured several times that backgrounds were done on applicants, I found out they haven't been done. Just as I was the first to uncover issues with HDL and warned our city attorney and city manager about them, um, and I shared much of what I uncovered, uh, I understand that neither I nor my colleagues can legally consider, uh, these things, other things that I've uncovered. I understand. In due time and related to this, these issues with a wide variety of people will be made public. I want everybody to understand that I do this work for our citizens. It is not personal. We are literally overturning prohibition of cannabis sales in our city. I would be derelict of my duties to our fellow citizens if I had not done this work. Staff should have done it. HDL should have done it, and they did not. So we were left here hanging, and we still are. Because I worked hard and told the public of only a small amount of information I found, one applicant attacked me, Dan Sharp, using sexist language that no person should use with elected women or any woman. It is clear to me that I hit a sore spot. To be clear, I will not use this attack against the applicant in any way. I want to clear up a couple of things before I get into the public documents about Showcase. The applicant has applied for a medicinal marijuana license in San Francisco. The planning commission approved it. Before the applicant got the license, a well-known Buddhist immigrant and schoolteacher, along with others, filed an appeal of the commission's approval, saying the applicant, quote, "fraudulently submitted signatures associated with fake addresses", unquote, "to win approval." An attorney for Marlene Tran hired a certified handwriting expert who found signatures were fake. The attorney called it fraud. This is all in your public documents. I'm sure you've read all of them. I take you through this to clarify information that I gave in public. Um, all of the information is in the public record, and I want to make sure this corrects a couple of things that I did say that were wrong. I own when I say something that was wrong. It was wrong to say that they didn't get their, uh, that they weren't approved. The planning commission did approve, but they were not giving their, uh, license. So that's where we were. Now let me take you through a small bit of the evidence that magnifies the points I made earlier. San Francisco Planning Commission mandatory discretionary review 126, 2017, page 57, 676 residents' signatures of support attached. The San Francisco Board of Appeals, Marlene Tran, and individual Russell Maureen, and individual Ying Chin, and individual, um, they're the appellant. And, um, they said that they, uh, in this, it says on page 12, elevated system, which is, uh, the applicant, in this case Showcase, mischaracterized the support from the community by falsifying the resident signatures in support of its operation. They fraudulently submitting signatures associated with fake addresses and mischaracterized a community leader's concern as, quote, "support for the dispensary." Um, 4 on 1, majority of the so-called 676 signatures are not genuine. At least 56 addresses associated with the so-called 676 resident signatures do not exist. All right. Um, and then it goes on, "The dispensary presented material false facts to the zoning administrators, Mr. Sanchez, about the so-called community support." And then on to page 8 in that same document. "The attribution of many Asian-Americans were mistreated and could not present their viewpoints properly." And they later say in these documents that it was because, um, everything was given to them in English. However, I did look back at their documents, and it looks to me like there are other languages there, including Mandarin. But they allege that they were not, but I, I will say on behalf of, uh, the applicant that I saw some that weren't. But there's a lot of, um, uh, documents in there and direct, um, direct testimony uh, that people gave, and I'm sure again that you've read all of this, I hope, um, is that, um, backs all this up, and there are people who can barely speak English, some who don't speak English, and they had to have, uh, people speak for them. Uh, page 18, "The attribution of the statement to our local program manager is unethical and unacceptable and seriously, seriously calls to question the integrity of BG INC. and its leadership." This was a complaint filed from Mr. Santiago to the planning commissioners on Jan- on January 26, 2017. Exhibit H was attached there, and you got this. Um, so, you know, that's, that's, those are the things. I could go on and on.
Yeah, would you cut to the quick here, please?
I was giving the evidence to show that I did not lie to anybody, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm, I know, I know. We understand that.
Yeah, and, um, no matter what they say, they can say, oh, that was a mistake, they did this, they did that. I get mistakes. But the bottom line is that these people went and testified and, and put together documents by attorneys showing that they did, um, make up things, and so that's all I have to say about that. Um, and I hope that you did look at the documents and read them. Um, um, Dan Sharp is one of the smartest people I've ever met. He and my brother were best friends. Um, but again, this can't be personal, uh, because I did take care of him when he was young. And, um, if it were personal, then I couldn't have ever talked about this, so. That's what I want to say, and I want my colleagues to understand that I stand by what I've said and what I've just read. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
It's up to, it's really, at this point, it's council deliberations, so again, it's the time for all council members to talk about, um, uh, whether or not they want to give preliminary approval to up to two more, uh, applicants. We have three we're considering only tonight, so that's, it was pursuant to your direction. So again, uh, we're left with the Authentic, Showcase, and CCC. And so it's again, just open to the council members now to discuss which ones, uh, uh, up to two they would be interested in, in giving a preliminary approval to.
Well, let me begin by saying that I'm very much in favor of Showcase.
Do you want a response, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm looking for a response, please.
Okay, sorry. I read all the paperwork. Uh, there's, there's, this is probably not the time or the place to, to, to get into, but, but I read, I read everything, and my vote hasn't changed. Um, I'm in favor of Showcase. I'm in favor of Authentic. Authentic is the number one producer, uh, in California. Uh, I've seen their financials. I know how much money they make. I think they're in like 11 different cities, that most of the dispensaries actually buy, um, Authentic's product, CZ or something like that. Um, this is the, this is the underbelly of cannabis. And like I said, we had the public hearing, and I, I looked at them all, I think, very fairly. I have friends in all sides. Uh, I also think that, uh, uh, what I refer to as CCC, they're right up there, and, and I would encourage them to hang around, but, but in comparing all of them together, like I said, my vote hasn't changed. It's Authentic and Showcase. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else want to comment? Well, I would also be voting for Authentic, so those two would be my preference. Councilwoman Bertoni, please.
I'm just going to say that I'm in favor of the two that we've already selected, um, and I think, you know, my decision is based, like I've already stated, on the fact that this is new to Fairfield. I think that two organizations is enough for us to start with. Um, the record here is, unfortunately, it's, it's just, it's unclear when it comes to Showcase to me. I mean, I, some of the statements that were made are troublesome to me, and they're in a, they're in a record. They're in a legal proceeding. So I'm just, I'm going to stick with, I'm not going to be voting for any additional, um, dispensaries other than the two that we have, uh, already approved.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? Councilwoman Moy, please.
Yeah, um, I, uh, will, tentatively, I will vote for Authentic. Again, you know, if, if we're going to allow him to complete his investigation, which I think we should, you know, it's possible something could come up, but I, I could do that. Um, and, uh, I guess I would just, um, doesn't sound like there are votes for the other, uh, that I, I liked, so I won't bring that up. But it looks like, uh, Authentic, um, maybe has the votes to go forward, and then we'll, uh, double-check whatever, uh, Greg comes up with, with that one.
Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Well, I think everybody knows how I felt when I, what I said earlier. I wanted to see a little bit more of an investigation, but listen, I respect what everybody, um, everybody's opinion. Um, Pam, I totally understand where you're coming from. I do. Um, but I'm going to stick with what my original votes were. Um, it sounds like that's kind of what we're doing here. So, um, you know, if we're not going to look at any other evidence, and I understand why it's already been said. Um, so my original votes were for Showcase and Authentic, so I'll stick with that. But I also, um, if something does come up, Greg, my question is to you. Um, what, what happens then?
Well, you won't make any final decision until we come back with resolution and conditions. So you're not bound by the preliminary determination at all, so.
And, and that's, uh, just to be clear, that's based on whatever the council's direction is after you make a determination on who you're selecting, if any.
But to make it clear and to Pam's point, we do move forward with the first two that we already voted on.
Yes, they're coming back on the fifteenth.
Okay. Then I'll stick with my original votes.
Councilman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I'm also going to, um, proceed with my original votes, which was showcasing after listening in and reading all the information. I'm, and I know that, you know, something comes up and something comes up on their end, but I think, uh, Showcase. And then I think my other, my other vote was for CCC.
Councilman Tonason, please.
And then Mayor, I'll stick with the, can you hear me? Can you turn off your sound? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I'll stick with the Showcase and, and I, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, against Authentic in any way, and it looks like they have the votes. Um, I'm, I'm good with either one of those. Uh, I'll, I'll stick with CCC for, for no particular reason. I do like Authentic, but I would like to, down the road, you know, somebody, one of you said to have them stick around. I, I mean, I, I think that if we, if we look at this for a year or two years, I know we talked about this earlier and, and I was one of the supporters of six in the beginning, so, uh, is there a possibility of coming back in a year, two years and doing this again?
That's up to the council.
Yeah, it's a possibility to do that in six months if you wanted. I mean, it's, it's up to the council.
Yep. All right. Well, th- thank you all for the hard work, too. I, I know that obviously there's a little tension going on here, but, uh, this, this, this has been a long process and, you know, just us going through something like this and then having to deal with all the DSL stuff and then having the council, you know, we're, we're, we're all making our own picks. This was, this was, I mean, I'm four months in or five months in. This was certainly one of the most, uh, difficult and time-consuming decisions that I've made. And, uh, you know, I, I appreciate, uh, your guys' leadership on this council and, and, uh, I look forward to, to the future. Thank you.
Anything else, colleagues?
All right. So at this point, I think Councilman Moy has, uh, has raised their hand.
I just want to go ahead and I'd like to take them separately if we could.
We could do that.
I'd like to take a, uh, make a motion to approve, um, Authentic. Uh, I guess this is tentative, so, um, and move forward with that.
I'll second it.
It moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bertani?
No.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonason? You're muted.
Aye.
And, and that's, and that's, that's a reversal there. Uh, we're just pushing Authentic through.
Okay. Vice Mayor Vicarol?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes.
Thank you. So that's six to one.
Six to one. So the, uh, council has given just preliminary, uh, approval, uh, to, uh, Authentic. Uh, a resolution with conditions will need to be prepared and we'll come back to you at a future date with. So, so only at that point will a decision be final. So at this point in time, Showcase was the other one that had the most, um, interest, if you will, during the discussion, so.
But anybody can make a
A motion for any
Here for whatever you want. You don't have to do Showcase or any of them. That's up to you guys.
Yep, that's correct.
Well, Mayor, I'll make a motion then for Showcase.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Councilmember Bertani?
No.
Councilmember Moy?
No.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonason?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicarol?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes.
That passes five to two.
All right. So that's it. So you, uh, council previously had only authorized up to four, uh, permits. So you've given preliminary determinations now to four. So we cannot consider any more at this point. And as I mentioned, on the fifteenth, we'll come back with, um, the, uh, the, uh, JGBI and, uh, embark. And, uh, the other two will follow. So this is the final question for you. As I said, we wanted to come back to this, and this is your direction to me. And that is whether or not you would want me to continue with my review of those allegations that got received, right? And if not, I will definitely follow your direction. That's through your purview. Uh, if not, I would, uh, continue that review and then, uh, determine whether or not there's anything there that is of concern that you should consider.
Mayor, I'd make a, I don't know if you need a motion and
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to continue the investigation. And if you could tell us who is, uh, surreptitiously, uh, sending these, whether it's a fake law firm or whatever it is, I certainly would like to know that information.
Yes.
Because it could change things going down the line.
But for how long?
Chuck?
Uh, just the information that, no, that we've received up till today, I guess.
Yes.
But nothing further. I, I'm not even going to look at anything else. I'll just throw it back.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
And Councilmember Bertani?
No.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonason?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicarol?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes.
That passes six, one.
Six, one.
All right, council, we're finished for tonight on this item.
Okay, we have one more item of business to take care of, and that's item number twenty-three. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Public hearing regarding the draft 2020 City of Fairfield Urban Water Management Plan. And our presenter is Assistant Public Works Director of Utilities, Michael Heather.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Fairfield City Council members. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Fairfield City Council members. I'm Michael Heather, Assistant Public Works Director for the city's water utility. The item before you this evening is a public hearing to receive input on updates to the city's draft urban water management plan, as well as the draft water shortage contingency plan, both of which are intended to be planning documents examining the city's preparation for long-term water use, as well as provision of water service requiring incrementally more stringent conservation measures in the event of a declared water shortage. Tonight's agenda item consists of a brief presentation, a formal opening, the public hearing to answer any questions you, you or the public has. So as I see it, tonight's presentation seeks to provide answers to four basic questions. First, I'll briefly describe the Urban Water Management Planning Act and the primary requirements behind the regulation. Second, I'll provide a status on the city's conservation efforts to date. Third, I'll describe the current status of the city's water supplies. And finally, I'll outline next steps as we proceed to submit our plans to the Department of Water Resources. So the Urban Water Management Planning Act was adopted in nineteen eighty-three as Assembly Bill seven nine seven, signed into law the subsequent year. And urban water management plans are intended to support long-term water resource planning to ensure that water suppliers have adequate supplies to meet existing and future needs. The act requires that all urban water suppliers serving more than three thousand customers or those delivering more than three thousand acre feet on annual basis, develop an urban water management plan. The act also requires that the suppliers update, uh, provide the Department of Water Resources every five years. So as part of the update, urban water managed suppliers must assess the reliability of water sources over the next twenty years, which is typical of a long-range planning cycle. In two thousand eighteen, two bills, Senate Bill six oh six and Assembly Bill sixteen sixty-eight, were signed into law, which amended portions of the water code to require inclusion of a water shortage contingency plan into the urban water management plan, resulting in an update to both plans, which must occur every five years. All of this results in a commitment to meet two primary requirements of the act, which are to verify the adequacy of our long-term water supplies and meeting planned growth and ensure there are multiple strategies in place to enable the city to deal with a significant water shortage. So before talking specifically about how the city has met with the twenty-by-two thousand twenty water conservation goals, I'll first provide some context on the Water Conservation Act of two thousand nine, which outlined the twenty-by-two thousand twenty water conservation goes, goals. So back in two thousand eight, the governor introduced a seven-part comprehensive plan to address problems in the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. As part of this effort, the government directed state agencies develop a plan to reduce statewide per capita urban water use. The Water Conservation Act of two thousand nine set forth a statewide roadmap to maximize the state's urban conservation opportunities between two thousand nine and two thousand twenty, in essence, to achieve a twenty percent decrease in per capita water consumption by the year two thousand twenty. As part of the policy implementation, five basic groups were formed and consulted as stakeholders to ensure that affected water suppliers were well-represented and is critical note that past city staff not only participated, but were instrumental in including certain provisions that protected the economic interests of the city. So in order to establish a twenty percent reduction, a baseline had to be calculated. And the city's baseline was established at two hundred and twenty-six gallons per capita per day, which was derived by calculating water consumption over a period no greater than ten years. Our baseline period spanned from nineteen ninety-six through two thousand five. The actual twenty-twenty gallons per capita per day was calculated based on twenty-twenty population data provided by the Association of Bay Area Governments and the city's gross water consumption, consumption using meter data during the calendar year two thousand twenty. So while the Department of Water Resources allows for optional economic and weather normalization adjustments, the City of Fairfield made no adjustments and compliance was achieved without using any of these factors. So the graph depicted here portrays the city's gross per capita per day water consumption dating back to the late nineteen nineties. The red line in the upper portion of the graph depicts the baseline per capita consumption covering the years used to establish the city's baseline prescribed by the state. The yellow line in the middle right portion of the graph depicts the target per capita use taken from the time the Water Conservation Act was enacted through the target date of two thousand twenty. After taking eighty percent of two hundred and twenty-six, which is depicted by the yellow line, at a hundred and eighty-one gallons per capita per day and comparing it, pairing that to the city's actual gross consumption during two thousand twenty, which is depicted by the green line at a hundred and seventy-five gallons per capita per day, the data confirms that the city has met its twenty-by-two water conservation goals. So given the cadence and tone of drought messaging in the media and our timing to take action on adopting our plans, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the state of the city's water supply. And as you may already know, that Solano County was included in the expanded declaration that was published a couple of weeks ago. My suspicion is that Solano County was included in the expanded order due to the county's geographic location as we are situated between the counties that were included in the original declaration and those to the east in the Sacramento Valley, which are adjacent to the delta. Now, I think we can all agree that droughts in multiple years, uh, dry years have been our reality in California. But I think it's important to differentiate the broad message of the drought and separate that from the city, City of Fairfield's access uh, to water, which makes our situation very different from other agencies and water purveyors around the state. So what I'm attempting to do in this slide is to give you a graphical representation of our access to water as compared to projected demands, because it is important to understand water supply and our access as it compares to demands during a, a period of dry years. I would simply describe this graph as the City of Fairfield being in the unique position of having plenty of water to use, but definitely none to waste. The city primarily relies on two water sources, those being the state water project and the other being the Solano project. Locally, state water project water comes from the Sacramento Valley runoff and is conveyed through the North Bay Aqueduct, whose intake is located at Barker Slough, about twelve miles to the east. The second source of our water comes from Solano County Project, which is stored in Lake Bariessa. Currently, Lake Bariessa is nearly three quarters full, and while that doesn't give us cause to celebrate, it certainly isn't a reason to panic. To the City of Fairfield, I liken Lake Bariessa as the equivalent of having a healthy savings account that we can draw upon, very much like a responsible person who diligently saves money every paycheck and draws on their savings account to make it through a period of unemployment or unforeseen layoff. Like that person who relies on his or her savings account, Lake Bariessa is what allows the City of Fairfield to comfortably make it through a period of several dry years. So as it pertains, uh, to the current condition of the city's water supplies, the call to action is simple. We should keep doing what we have been doing because the data shows that we've already been acting responsibly, responsibly and being good stewards. On the demand side, we'll continue to conserve and discourage water waste as we have been doing, which is supported by our twenty percent reduction per capita water use. On the supply side, we'll continue responsibly manage our access to water through both sources, which are Solano Project and state water projects. We'll also continue to rely on Lake Bariessa or our savings account to get us through the dry years. And if needed, enact call or emergency water agreements that the city already has in place. So in summary, tonight's public hearing will follow by a second public hearing and adoption of both planning documents, which is scheduled for the city council meeting on June fifteenth. The June fifteenth meeting will allow for additional time to incorporate any feedback on the draft urban water management plan to be incorporated prior to submittal. Once completed, I will be submitting both plans to the State Department of Water Resources by the July first deadline. And with that, I'll pause here for any questions.
Comments or questions for Michael? Excellent presentation, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
I just have a, a couple of very quick questions. Michael, are you aware of any residents in Fairfield who are still relying upon wells in their backyards or elsewhere on their property?
I, I'm not aware, and private wells are, are particularly sensitive topic because I know of agencies where wells are allowed on private property and it's a reliable source of water for them and they use it for irrigation purposes. What leaves the city in a precarious position with private wells is, is you must, when you have multiple sources uh, on a private, private property, what you don't want to have is, is a pump that could inadvertently pump water that in, from, in my perspective, is, is non-totally back into our water system. So every new water service that we put in has, has a backflow device to prevent, um, situations like that.
And then the, the other question is, residents are asking, do we have to cut back yet on our landscaping watering?
We are not asking residents, uh, to do that at this time. In, in my mind, the residents have been doing what we've been asking them to do for the last several years. And they've, they've cut, um, their per capita use by twenty percent. I think there are certain instances where residents can be proactive and take a look at their irrigation systems. We have, uh, folks that go out and, and will do audits and suggest, uh, for example, um, more efficient, uh, sprinkler heads than what they have. Uh, the technology, uh, on sprinkler heads has allowed for tighter spray patterns and less water use. And in some cases, what that ends up, what ends up happening is you find a leak. This has happened on my own private property, a leak you didn't know you had.
Yes.
Because it's an underground leak.
Un- unless there are any comments or questions for Michael, Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you, Michael, very, very good. You know, if you could just address very quickly, one of the things that we get attacked for is we're saving water, but our water bill is going up. Um, and obviously, that's due to personnel and infrastructure costs, but, a, a lot of people don't equate the two, if they're saving water, they want to know why are they paying more?
Yes, that's a, that's a reasonable question, and it, it's one of those precarious lines you walk across where you ask people to use less of something, but you're going to get charged more for something. So, you have the operations costs, which are becoming increasingly stringent in the way of what we monitor, what we're required to support, how far down in the parts per billion, in some cases, parts per trillion, uh, to report to the state, so there's many reporting requirements that compliance comes with a price tag, not to mention the capital costs of, um, here in the City of Fairfield, like other cities, we have some infrastructure to replace, just because it's, it's getting to a point where it just needs to be replaced.
Good answer, thank you, sir.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? I will then open the public hearing, Madam Kirk, do we have any request to speak cards?
No, there are none.
So, close the public hearing and bring it back for council action.
Make a motion to, make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Okay, is there a second, please?
Mr. Mayor, I think Greg's trying to say something here real quick, but for some reason, we're not I was Michael here, I think this was only to receive input on the plan, uh, Michael, is it true there's no actual action item for the council?
Yes, to June fifteenth, we will be requesting that, that's, that's correct.
Okay, I stand, I stand corrected.
No need, you'll see it on the June fifteen.
Okay, but we are adjourned then until June fifteenth at six P M., thank you very much, and appreciate
And Mr. Mayor, do you want to adjourn?